We're all independent tonight, but that's okay. There are no actions to report on a closed session. So on the discussion of the Order of the Agenda, staff has requested. I didn't do a roll call, right? Sorry. Let's go back up to the roll call. That's why you want, I jumped a line. Let's do a roll call, Vice Chancellor, whatever your arbitral.
Chief of the shaft.
President Schwartz.
I don't know, I'm here, I guess.
Vice President Duras. Trustee Goodman. Here. Trustee Holliver.
Here.
Trustee Mendelkern.
Present.
Student trustee Shadet.
Yeah.
Also in attendance are Chancellor Claire, Skyline College interim president Jackson, College of San Mateo acting president Lopez, Skyline College president designate Moreno, chief financial officer Slater, and district academic senate president Wallace.
Okay, very good, thank you, thank you. Sorry about the mishap. Now, discussion of the Order of the Agenda. The staff has requested that the Agenda item 20-76A, which is an update on the Crystal Springs cross-country course, be moved to be the first item to follow statements from the public on non-Agenda items. Is that agreeable with the board?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, everybody is not in agreement. Are there any other edits that we want to change on the Agenda board members? If not, we will proceed. Okay. Statements from the executives and student representatives. Chancellor Claire, would you like to start with your executive report?
Thank you, President Schwartz, and welcome, everybody. A couple of things to announce today. First of all, in your board packet, I want to acknowledge the class of 2020. I mean, after all, isn't that where we're here? That's why we're really here. And the fact that we awarded, according to what I'm looking at, 21 bachelor's degrees out of Skyline College for the Respiratory Care Program, 2,911 associate degrees, and 1,191 certificates, and I could give you more data, it's in your board packet, is really, first and foremost, a testament to our students to complete during this COVID-19 academic year, but also a testament to our faculty, our classified staff and administrators. Everybody pulled together. We did the very best we could under incredible circumstances, and our students knocked it out of the park. So I just want to congratulate, in particular, our students. We've still got to figure out a graduation. You recall, we put that on hold, and we surveyed students, and we're hoping to celebrate appropriately when it's safe to do so. I also want to extend, first of all, congratulations. We have a very special guest with us tonight, and that's Brian Horowitz, who, as you all know, was not only recognized as the district's Classified Employee of the Year, but he's also been selected as one of the Classified Employees of Years for the entire state of California. So Brian, really, congratulations. And what I'd like to do is, first of all, give a little bit of time to Tom Vice Chancellor Bauer to say a little bit about Brian. And then, Brian, if you'd like to say a few words, we don't want to put you on the spot, but we'd love to hear from you. But really, congratulations. Our classified employees are amazing. They are the glue that holds this place together. So to be recognized as one of the best among the best is a real honor. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So Vice Chancellor Bauer?
Thanks, Chancellor Claire. So I want, we're actually kind of sharing this honor. So Brian, any employee in Auxiliary and Community Services, they're an employee in our division, but they're also really an employee of the college that they work at. So I do have some things I want to say, but I'm actually going to let Dr. Moore go first on behalf of Kenyatta College.
Thank you for that, Vice Chancellor Bauer. Thank you for that, trustees and Chancellor Claire. And once again, congratulations, Brian. I just wanted to take this opportunity on behalf of Kenyatta College, as well as all of our classified staff, to just say thank you so much for your commitment to student quality, student success. Spending 23 years at Kenyatta is just amazing. I just want to say, too, that everyone that I spoke to about Brian had extraordinary things to say. So I'm just going to read a small list, and I've got 23 pages. Just kidding, making sure if you're listening.
One more than me.
So I just asked for, this is some small outreach, and so the words that are coming up are someone who is dedicated, someone who is always there to help students, someone always greeting students with a smile, someone who is always helping students and staff, not only in training them to navigate the bookstore, but kind of helping them to navigate the campus. One student shared that my time with Brian was very special because when I arrived at Kenyatta, I was very overwhelmed. And Brian always took the time, not only to give me a smile, but to take the time to share information with me. I really felt I could ask him any question and not feel that it was a dumb question, but that it was a question that he would answer. Brian is such a kind person. I'm going to miss seeing him in the bookstore. And I always recognize him when he's there. He's there not just for himself, but he's always there for students and staff. And Brian, I just want to say once again, on behalf of Kenyatta, the faculty and the staff and the students, we just want to say congratulations. We want to say thank you. And you will be missed, but feel free to Zoom in anytime to say hello. We would love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. So, you know, on behalf of the Auxiliary team, which I'm privileged to lead, we always, our tagline is that we provide indispensable services to the three colleges, faculty, staff, and students. And that is what Brian has done. I think the board recognized that years and years ago when the very first Above and Beyond Award, where the board recognized employees for going above and beyond, was won by Brian Horowitz. I could go on, but what I would really rather do is Brian's daughter Sarah wrote a letter to the state chancellor's office. And I think what I'd like to do is just read from that letter what his daughter had to say about him. And I think that that will resonate with the board about why Kenyatta chose him, why you chose him, and why he is as special as he is. Because to have a child write a letter like this is pretty impressive. And this is just a piece of it. It says, "My father embodies the mission and vision of the California community colleges, putting students first. I have stood on the sidelines and watched as my dad selflessly devoted his weekends and evenings to students needing help with homework, seeking employment opportunities, needing a connection at another institution, writing a letter of recommendation, or needing an extra $50 to send back home to their family in Nepal to survive another month. To a fault, my dad has given himself wholly to the family he has created and nurtured at the Kenyatta College bookstore." Why does any of this matter? Why is it relevant that a man, against all odds, against severe hardship, has fought his way upstream to show up to the office every day? It matters because it sets the best example for those around him. As we tend to learn by example and not by written word, Brian serves as a beacon to those around him at the bookstore. While it would be easy to simplify the role of a bookstore employee as someone who manages the flow of books in and out of inventory, the unstated qualifications critical to this role are those possessed by my dad, namely, a relentless focus on students' needs and goals. My dad is always willing to bend his ear to any student regardless of the topic. Brian is driven exclusively by the need to help others, whether that is a student, a faculty member, a member of the administration, or family. In closing, I would like to thank you for considering my dad as the nominee for your most prestigious award. As this marks his 23rd year of service, as well as last, as he did just retire, this nomination has served as the highest form of honor you could ever offer. So to have a child, write that about your dad. Oh, I mean. So Brian, you make us all proud. We love you. It's all yours. Congratulations.
You want me to talk?
I do. Now you can say whatever you want to say.
Okay, I'd like to thank Chancellor Claire and all the members of the Board of Trustees for sharing this evening with me. And I'd like to just kind of briefly recount what I said to the state chancellor and Board of Governors yesterday. So in speaking before them, receiving this award, I made it clear that my 23 years working for the San Mateo Community College District were a complete joy. And that, to me, this award was an acknowledgement of my extended bookstore family, our amazingly talented students, and all of the accomplished employees within our district. Special recognition was given to Tom Bauer and Jay Kumar for their incredibly selfless leadership at the Kenyatta College bookstore. I then spoke about the unwavering support I have received on the Kenyatta College campus and through our district, which has touched me in the deepest way. That coupled with the unconditional love from my family and friends reminds me on a daily basis just how lucky and blessed I am. I ended my speech with a tribute. Finally, there is someone I would like to dedicate this award to. Someone who has instilled within me the empathy, compassion, and strength needed to constantly reach out and do my best each and every day. She is my best friend and love of my life, my wife of 43 years, Linda Horowitz. Thank you.
Excellent. Excellent.
Thank you so much, Brian. And before we let you go, I don't know if the board members would like to make any comments to our state Classified Employee of the Year. And then I have a few more remarks to make after that, but I wanted to give you an opportunity to say any words you might like to say.
Okay, I see Jade frantically over there waiting. She wanted to say something.
Yeah. Hi, Brian.
Hi, Jade.
I just want to say congratulations. And when I first came to Kenyatta, Brian was one of the first people that I met. So I can say from experience how amazing Brian is and how helpful he's been to me within my last two years at Kenyatta. And so I just want to say congratulations. He truly deserved this. And I just want to wish you the best of luck on wherever you go from here.
Thank you, Jade.
Oh, thank you. Other board members? Amores, trustee Goodman?
Yep. Hey, Brian. Congratulations. Very well deserved. As already been said, this comes on the heels of you receiving the Outstanding Service and Going Above and Beyond Award. Very well deserved, Ben, and this is very well deserved right now. Congratulations and many blessings.
Thank you, Maury.
Thank you. Trustee Mendelkern?
Yes, and Brian, just wanted to congratulate you. Again, quite an honor. I mean, first, of course, being recognized amongst your peers here in the district as our best of the best. And then, at the state level, which we know it's, you know, again, you've got the best from all 73 districts across the state. And it's really incredible people that you were being evaluated against. And so to come out as the winner there is, this really speaks to all the wonderful things you've done for our district. And thank you so much for everything you've done over your entire career here. And I guess, in a way, fitting that this is as capstone as you are retiring now. And it's a great honor, and we wish you all the best in the future, and we wish you a very happy retirement. And thank you for everything you've done to make this district so much better by all your actions. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And trustee Nurus?
Brian, congratulations. All I can say is enjoy the rest of your life. And anybody that wears a mustache as well as you do deserves it.
That's for sure. Trustee Holliver?
Join in and congratulating you and thanking you for so many great years of dedicated service to our students and Godspeed to you.
Thank you.
Brian, I just want to say, on a personal note, you're just a wonderful human being. I didn't even know that you had open heart surgery until I saw you on campus a few days after, which was absolutely amazing, which shows what a strong person you are. And I know you've sent a help to your wife, and it's been, should not go unnoticed. But I'm so happy to them. The state actually does something that's absolutely smart, and the best thing to do is to pick you as the Employee of the Year for the community colleges. Well, well deserved. And I can't go without saying that in our own district, I think you are number five of the times we've sent people up to the state. So you are a wonderful representative of the employees that we have within this district. And you shine, and you make us feel very proud. So thank you so much. Another chapter in your life after retirement. And enjoy it the best you can, because you will contribute to the community, I know.
Thank you very much. One last thing I would like to say is what I like about this so much is that it's something that we can all share, you know, together. It's something that can bring us together. And it's a time when we need that kind of.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes, best recognition. Thank you so much. Chancellor, back to you.
Thank you. And once again, congratulations, Brian. Thank you for making a huge difference in our students' lives. And congratulations on your retirement. And while we're on the subject of retirement, I want to also formally thank Dr. Jeanette Jackson. And Dr. Jackson has been giving us her countdown for about the last month now. So every meeting, we ask her how many days. And next Thursday will be her last day. And this will be her last board meeting with us. And I just, Jeanette, I just want to, you know, I've talked to you personally, but I just, I cannot thank you enough. I know when you initially got the call, I guess probably sometime over the summer, you thought, okay, I could do this interim job for a year. And, you know, that'll be fine. And, you know, who knew that all these other things would happen? And on a personal basis, you've always been so supportive. I cannot tell you, and I'll express this to the board, how helpful it is to have a former chancellor, an experienced chancellor, and a highly experienced president and educator on your team. Because, Jeanette, you know, I would go to you for words of wisdom. And I appreciate the mentoring and the coaching. But most importantly, I appreciate your service to Skyline College this year. I wish you all the best in your retirement. And I know, I think I speak for all of us. I just want to thank you for everything you've done. We will miss you. I'll miss our conversations. But I know that you're going to enjoy that retirement. So again, I want to give Jeanette a chance to say a little bit. And it's sort of, it's Skyline president's turn to speak, so I think it's probably a nice segue. And then certainly want to leave an opportunity if any of the board members would like to comment. So Dr. Jackson, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you so much, Chancellor. I appreciate it. I've been thinking, you know, as you get close to the end, and I'm sure, Brian, you can relate to this, you start looking back on the things that you've done and the impact that maybe you've helped other individuals that are out there. But that being said, I took a lot, as well as learned a lot during this time that we went through. But when I met the board for the first time prior to starting at Skyline, I was in a wheelchair. And I just had surgery. And so trustee Schwartz, I am envious of you because I am still recuperating from that, that, I think it was a fibia, broken, you know, fibia. And so it's taking a little longer than I thought. But the doctor told me that I'm doing good. So I went from the wheelchair to the walker, and now I'm walking without a cane. So I've made some progress in that. I also set up certain goals and objectives that I wanted to accomplish during this year. And I won't take very long, but I just want to let the board know what Skyline has done during that period. And one was, after I met with all the constituency groups, including the students, one of the things that we wanted to do as a college was to strive for greater transparency in everything we do. And we started that with looking at our Strategic Planning and Resource Allocation Committee, or Spark. And we did training for them. We did onboarding and really gave them time to take recommendations back to their different constituency groups. And I think when we adopted our budget, everybody was in consensus on that. And it's very positive. So we're going to continue that process after adopting Moreno. We had a successful 50th anniversary with the building, and that was an incredible milestone. And I felt a little guilty because I was here only in July, and there I was representing the college of 50 years. So I want to thank all of you that attended. It was a great success. And we raised a lot of money. I don't have the number in front of me, but we did raise a substantial amount of money for our promised scholars. We had outstanding accreditation. We got no recommendations, and we got several commendations. And we did indeed demonstrate to our visiting team just how amazing Skyline College really is. We increased our investment in professional development through CTTL and through a grant with IEPi. We pushed to enact the general education reforms we've seen over the last few years. And during the month of March, with the advent of COVID-19, we had over 500 hours of training as we transitioned from a face-to-face to an online delivery mode of instruction. And that wasn't just Skyline faculty. That was also faculty throughout the district. Our Classified Senate has launched its own professional development initiative called the Classified Leadership Institute, or CLI. This is the first year that they're doing that. It's their initial launch. They have acquired a caring campus grant from the state chancellor's office to assist in that. And they also got a President Innovation Fund Award. And last but not least, the main reason you hired me was to complete the recruitment of a permanent CEO at Skyline College. And I am proud, and I believe that she will do great things, Dr. Melissa Moreno. And if you can survive the very thorough vetting process that we went through to get a permanent president, I know she will do well. So thank you all. I couldn't have done it without just great staff, great faculty, classified professionals and administrators, and assistance from the district office, and guidance of the other presidents and the college staff. We really are a team. I saw us come together as a team, more so than I've seen at other colleges that I've worked with. That is kudos to you as a board. That is kudos to the leadership within this district. And believe it or not, as much as I'm looking toward retirement, I am also going to miss all of you. So thank you very much for the opportunity to serve one more time.
Here.
Very, very good. President Jackson, I'm still going to call you president for a while. I'm sure we're going to have maybe a couple of people that want to speak. But one person I know that's waiting anxiously is Kate Brown. Is she unmuted? Or not?
I think someone has to bring her over.
Oh.
Yeah, Alexis.
Alexis.
Was it Catherine Brown?
I'm muted.
Catherine Brown, yes.
Catherine Brown, I'm sorry.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
There you are.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Jackson. And I just wanted to say, on behalf of the Academic Senate, how much we appreciated you coming to us and bringing us in. And I also appreciate your comment about the very thorough vetting process that we all went through. As the co-chair of the Presidential Search Committee, it was very thorough, and you supported us every step of the way. I also wanted to mention that one of the things that Dr. Jackson never gave up on was not only the things that we did successfully, but the things that we struggled with. And she was an ally with us in those struggles. And we will continue to learn from her leadership moving forward. Looking at, we're looking at our committees. We're looking at our continuing that transparency that she talks so well about. So thank you, Dr. Jay. We will miss you, and you will be part of our next step.
Very good. President Moore, I think you wanted to say a couple of words.
Thank you. Board President Brown, trustees, Chancellor Claire. I just wanted to also echo my appreciation for Dr. Jackson, aka Dr. Jay. Thank you so much for coming on board and helping us out. I know it's, you know, thank you for helping us during fires, rolling blackouts, pandemic. I know that this is not what you had signed up for, but I just want to say thank you for your flexibility and smiling through it and always reminding us about how we can look at other alternatives to ensure that we are always helping students. I will miss you in our Zoom rooms. And I look forward to connecting, staying in touch with you. Also, thank you so much for your support for Skyline College, especially as Kate Brown so eloquently articulated that, you know, when you reach out for a new leader, a new CEO, and a campus that's going through transition, I want to thank you for your flexibility and always making sure you put students first, but reminding us about making sure we're continuing to be inclusive and understanding and recognizing the importance of that lens. So thank you, and thank you for hanging out with us. I will miss you. I look forward to continuing to connect with you in other avenues. Congratulations on another successful retirement.
Absolutely. I don't know if anybody else wants to speak at this time? President Lopez, interim President Lopez.
Yes, I can use this as my executive part, too. I think I just want to congratulate Brian so much for winning that state Classified Employee Award. That is just incredible recognition, and we're just so proud of you. And I also want to say, Dr. Jackson, you've been a wonderful colleague and a mentor. I have learned a lot from you this past year. And I am so appreciative that we had your leadership to guide us through probably the most difficult year of my professional career. So thank you so much, and you are going to be, I'm going to miss you so much. So I wish you well. I think I will take you up on that B&amp;B that you've offered all of us.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else want to speak at this time?
Opening up the trustees yet?
Yes, trustee Mendelkern, sure.
Great. Dr. Jackson, thank you so much. And, you know, you've been a leader your entire life, it seems, for being a leader and an officer in the Army, being a college president and chancellor in the Bay Area, coming to us. Thank you so much for agreeing to be our interim for Skyline College and for doing such a superb job. And this is a year that I'm sure you never imagined in your wildest nightmares when you signed up for this job. But it's been quite a year. And we look back and we think that, you know, if only the biggest thing we had to worry about was rolling blackouts and the shutting down the campus for two or three days, wouldn't we be so fortunate? And that seemed like such a big deal last fall. And now, here we are with this whole pandemic that we're dealing with. But I can't think of someone who is better qualified to step in and help us through this. And thank you for always putting our students first and helping our students succeed in every way. And I just want to wish you the very best. And hopefully now, your well-deserved retirement that you can actually take now. And good luck in Austin. It's a lovely place, and I hope you have a great time there. And congratulations on your own personal health journey. I recall seeing you in all those steps along the way, from the wheelchair to the walker to the cane. And it's great to know that you're up and walking without that mechanical assistance now. And I hope it just continues to get better from here. So thank you again so much, and congratulations to you, and best wishes for your retirement.
Thank you, trustee Mendelkern.
Thank you. Other trustees? Trustee Nurus?
Excellent. Thank you as well for all the great things that you did for the school. But let me just say that I also have watched you through your knee. And as you know, I'm going to be embarking on knee surgery soon. So I just hope it goes a little bit quicker than yours does. Anyway, it was a great pleasure getting to know you and to interact with you at the various times that I was up at the campus. You were always a very eloquent speaker and hostess at the events that we've had, giving Skyline College always the very best face. giving, giving Skyline College always the very best face forward. And I also appreciate everything you've done and wish you the very best on your retirement as well. And good luck with the knee going forward.
Trustee Goodman.
Yes, Dr. J, congratulations on finally reaching your retirement date. And hopefully it stays permanent this time so you can enjoy your, your new home with your husband, enjoy Texas. Look forward to hopefully running into you. I frequent Texas a lot with my younger brother being there, so hopefully we cross paths again. But I do, I do want to say thank you for stepping in in the time of need that we had at that Skyline College and for our district. Your leadership was definitely noticed and we appreciate it, thank you.
Trustee Oliver.
Um, I just will add my thanks and appreciation for the dedicated work you've done this past year for our students, for our district, bringing a very stabilizing presence to, to our college. And thank you for your leadership in our district, your many years of service to higher education, your many years of patriotic service to our nation and wish you all the best as you enjoy yourself.
Absolutely. I don't know if anybody else wants to speak. I, I wish you well. As President Jackson, I can't get that out, it's one more time, I guess. Yes, you and I have kind of the same similar situation going and that just shows you everybody's different as far as healing goes, but you handled it well. I want to thank you for not just being a placeholder up at Skyline, but being, giving of yourself, giving of your background and of your expertise to, to everybody when it was needed. And we're, and being a wonderful president for Skyline College, the short term and a very active term. We deeply, deeply, deeply appreciate it so much. You may, may be retiring again and going away, but with Zoom and everything, you are always welcome to come back and visit us anytime and keep us on our toes. So, I, again, wish you well and I don't know if anybody else wants to speak, but if not, Mike, Chancellor Claire, back to you.
Okay, and I apologize, it's been, this is a kind of a long report, but I think, you know, tonight we honor two incredible people on their retirement. So, I do want to make sure that our college presidents, if there's any, anything else of significance, this would be your time to speak. And if not, and I'm sorry, I'm on, I'm on my iPad tonight, so I can't see everybody at the same time. So I'm gonna have to rely on you, President Schwartz, if any of the presidents want to speak, I can't see everybody all at the same time. No? Okay. CFO Slater, any comments or are we gonna wait until your presentation?
No, nothing to report right now.
Okay. And finally, District Academic Senate President Wallace.
All right, thank you, Chancellor Claire. I do have a couple of things, I'll try to be brief. So, thank you for giving me a chance to update you on the work at Academic Senate. So, I do have a couple of things, yeah, I'm gonna try to be as quick as possible, especially since I don't want to follow all that great celebratory discussion with all this stuff. But anyways, so I got a couple of things. So, the first thing is I just wanted to give you a quick update on the District Senate's Task Force on Teaching and Learning. As I mentioned in a board, a previous board meeting, the District Academic Senate convened a task force in the spring that was charged specifically with creating policy and procedures in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The, the Task Force on Teaching and Learning has been instrumental in providing guidance to the district's faculty on grading policies and on teaching and learning in an online modality. Most recently, the TTL, which is comprised of faculty administration and staff, right? So, it's kind of a, a whole participatory governance committee has started drafting a vision for equity and social justice and distance education that we're really excited about. Considering, you know, we're putting this together because we, because of the myriad obstacles our students are facing in this new modality. Our goal is to create a statement that emphasizes compassion and flexibility for our students over the next several months as we all adjust this new learning environment. I want to give a shout out to the TTL, give a shout out to my co-chair, Aaron McBean. This committee has just been really, really amazing, a really good group of people to work with. Kind of similar to that, to that, the District Senate has also started to discuss its own vision for justice within its spheres of influence, specifically the ten plus one. All three local senates have drafted and adopted resolutions committing themselves to dismantling identity-based barriers and prejudice. And those are all passed like two years ago or so. But over the summer, the District Senate decided it was time for us to have such a resolution. In part, it would require the District Senate to undergo an equity audit and to work with its partners to re-envision our faculty hiring and evaluation procedures. And separate from this resolution, but in the same vein, we are also discussing a potential social justice or ethnic studies requirement for all students in the district, which I know is something that the student leadership has been pushing for, for a couple of years now. So, we started that discussion this week. So, I look forward to updating you on these discussions in the fall. The other two things I wanted to briefly share with you were the resolutions that the senate passed this month. And before I do that, I just want to kind of give you just a quick explanation of the purpose of District Senate resolutions, especially since you've gotten a few this summer. But I think I want to just like be clear that resolutions that are passed by the District Senate are not grievances against anybody or not always, sometimes they are, most of the time they're not. So, we, we don't pass them exclusively because we have an issue, all right? And so, and I say that because I don't want anybody on the board to interpret the resolutions this summer as any kind of rift between the Senate's administration. In fact, I don't think the, the relation, working relationship between the Senate and District Administration has been stronger than it has been over the last couple of months. So, the resolutions for, for senates serve a couple of purposes. And the, the first one is that resolutions like the, like board policy or official communications from the senate to the faculty, staff and administration and/or board. All right, so back in, I think it was like April or May, we, we passed that resolution asking the Board of, Board of Trustees to suspend the board policy around pass, no pass caps. That's an example of like an official communication to another constituency. The second purpose of a District Senate resolution is to establish an official position or stance on an issue, right? And this is, and oftentimes the board trustees passes resolutions like this, right? You'll pass a resolution that is kind of the official position of the board trustees, so we do the same thing. And so, like, for example, a couple of years ago, when the local senates passed their equity resolutions, this was the, the local senate taking an official position on equity and social justice, right? So, I just wanted to note that because many people do automatically interpret resolutions as grievances and, which is probably due to the fact that a lot of votes and no confidence are resolutions. So, anyways, with that in mind, first resolution I just wanted to quickly bring to your attention was the counseling resolution that I sent to you, I think, a couple of weeks ago. This resolution is affirming the discipline expertise of our counseling faculty and their professional purview over the pedagogy used in their discipline, especially as it relates to determining the length of counseling appointments. And so, so to be clear, I mean, so a couple of things. So, we, we brought this resolution to the board because, because it, it does, it has to do with the, the negotiating, right? And so, the District Senate thought that negotiations were starting to kind of creep into the academic and professional matters. In this case, the pedagogical expertise over how long a counseling appointment should be. And so, that is the reason why we passed this resolution and brought it to the board trustees, okay? And so, anyways, I just want to be clear that, you know, that, that resolution is about pedagogy, it's about teaching and learning. It is up to the counseling faculty and the counseling faculty alone as discipline experts to determine how much time students need in these appointments. And so, as I've mentioned before, you know, like I, it would be inappropriate for anybody outside of my discipline of English to tell me how many essays I should assign or how long these essays should be. The, the senate's position is it should be no different for our counseling faculty, all right? And so, um, so with that, I'd like the, the early childhood education resolution is the other one that the senate just passed this past Monday. And this one, we passed and are bringing to the board because there's a couple of asks that we have for the board trustees on this one. So, the, the, just kind of give you a little background, ECE faculty would like to engage the district and local administration in discussions about how to effectively offer their curricula and about the child development centers, both of which are so important to the state California's economic recovery. And so, I don't, I'm not gonna read through the whole resolution, but I do want to just kind of point your attention to some of the asks that are in the resolves. So, the first one is that the District Senate is requesting that the district work with the ECE faculty to purchase the necessary materials and access the quality resources and tools in order to offer their curricula online this fall. You know, this is a, this is a career ed discipline and so there's a lot of like hands-on materials that they're gonna have to try to convert into this online modality. The second one is, is more relevant to the board trustees and it's, the District Senate is asking the board trustees to use its position of influence and to kind of flex its muscles to advocate to the state chancellor, to the California Department of Education and local and state lawmakers for two things. The first one is increased access to raw footage of early childhood and education classrooms, essentially getting us more content for those online ECE courses. And also to advocate for full funding for the California Early Childhood Mentor Program, which I believe is at risk of being cut at the state level. And then finally, we'd like the district to engage with the Early Childhood Education faculty and the Child Development Center managers on reopening the district's two childhood development centers. The professionalized and programs are ready and willing to open the centers, which provide important practicums for ECE students and childcare to essential workers, including many of the essential workers in our district. It's also important to note that the state has granted exemptions to daycare centers and preschools and that the decision to close the centers was made by our district, okay? So, we do have the power to open them. The ECE faculty would simply like to start these conversations with the district so that the centers can be reopened when mutually agreed upon by the district and the people working in these centers and programs. And if there's any questions about the ECE resolution, Kate Brown is here. Let me see, I know Kate's here, Patty, Patty might be here also. Yeah, Patty Hall's also here, so if you have any questions, they're definitely the discipline experts. I'm just wanting to share that with you. So, with that, I'm concluding my report. Thank you.
Thank you, District Act, oh, go ahead, sorry. Now, I was gonna say, through the chair, is it appropriate to ask a question if we had a question?
I think so, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, um, so, thank you for the resolution. Thank you both Patty and Kate for being available for questions. I do have a few questions. Currently, I serve on the county COVID-19 response for an education and child, early childhood education committee. And some of the questions that we're trying to address were brought up on that committee. So, I did want to hear, I guess, directly from the professionals, Patty and Kate, if, if you can give me a little bit of information around, I guess, the reopening is one, but also the, the strategy around providing resources and services to, to training the professionals, you know, that we have in our programs that are going to be backfilling a lot of the openings and that we rely on as a county, if we're, you know, as we're talking about opening up, making sure that those that are, that we are responsible for training have the appropriate skill set to serve high-quality child development for our students within our county. Also, with regards to certification, not just the centers, but the childcare, the home care, childcare providers and the services that we're providing to essential workers. So, either Kate or Patty, could you, I guess, fill us in on the, not just the importance of it, but the, how it would be coordinated across our district? And how do you see those services being important for our centers to be opening?
Well, it looks like Patty needs to be unmuted. Yeah, she has to go perfect. Go ahead, Patty.
Chancellor Claire, trustees, colleagues who are invisible to me. Brian, if you're still on, thank you and it would be great to see you sometime soon. If you're not, I will contact you in another time and another way. Thank you very much for hearing our requests and our, our, our needs. I've been working and Kate's been working with colleagues across the state at both the early education and the elementary education level to convert our difficult to convert courses into meaningful experiences for our students in the fall. We were able to compromise a bit in the spring. We had a little wiggle room because it was mid semester almost when we closed. So, our, our spring semester closed quite successfully. And we are all working across the state, Maurice, trustee Goodman, to, to address your concerns, to be sure that we're continuing to keep that pipeline open to our centers in the community. Across the county, programs have both stayed open through the pandemic and continued to reopen more recently. And we're seeing directors and teachers responding to the needs of children and families in many and varied ways. Digital communications and interactions, just lots of creative responses to the need in the community. We know that there's no recovery without a solid childcare and early education system and that system is very fragile at the moment. So, in terms of what we're doing in the district, I think to respond to keeping the pipeline open is twofold. One, we've transformed our courses into meaningful experiences. And with the help of additional raw footage, we'll be able to make those courses even that much more robust. The one course that is a real challenge is that practicum student teaching course. Of course, for student teaching, you must be working in a classroom with children. So, this summer and in the fall, our plan is to serve students who can meet that requirement of being in a classroom with children through their employment. We have significant numbers of students who are employed, so we will continue to be able to serve them in our practicum class. That's a great solution for those students, but we do also have students who need our help with volunteer placements. So, currently, the county is not allowing volunteer placements in the open preschools and childcare centers. So, we aren't able to place those children there. We want to encourage the trustees and administrators in the district. And I, I think I speak for the faculty coordinators at the two child development centers and all of the early childhood faculty in saying that we want the childcare labs to open as soon as possible. And we also know that it's a very complicated equation and trustees and administrators have to really consider many, many things in making the decisions. I know that the faculty coordinators feel prepared and ready to open the programs. They also hold a lot of concern for the safety of the teachers and the staff that work in the program. So, i- it's none of it easy. Endogogically, though, we really want to encourage the reopening of the labs so that we can continue to serve, serve our students at the highest possible level and keep that teacher preparation pathway open. Was there anything else that you asked about, trustee Goodman?
Well, just around the, the pathway and drawing the correlation between that of the allied health pathways that we're keeping open and the importance to doing that as well as seeing this as a similar situation? Or do you see this as a separate and apart?
I, I think I heard my colleague Jeremy Wallace say that he wanted this resolution not to feel like it was a statement of disappointment or feeling that we, that we aren't in collaboration. feeling that we, that we aren't in collaboration, because, because we really are. These, these considerations are difficult for everyone. If you ask me personally, as a professional in the field um, and as a faculty leader, I think that we should be considered as an essential program and opened as an essential lab. And we have the ability to do that and stay safe. We have the evidence in the community of programs who have opened and have kept their faculty and their children and their staff safe. So in my personal and professional opinion, I think that we could open the labs right now. Um, that said, I, I know it's just a very difficult decision all around.
Of course, yeah, no, I assume that, you know, you felt that we were thinking that it was um, antagonistic or anything like that. I, I did just want, I had that concern. I just wanted to know your thoughts and I don't, I don't take it any way other than uh, as a positive, just trying to get the background. Um, as this, as you stated, this is a uh, a decision that if we are going to have, it's going to be a, a difficult decision and we're going to need as much data as possible to be able to make the right decision. So.
Yeah. So childcare is an essential service. Our programs have been opened.
Right.
Um, and, and in that, in that same sense, I think we should continue to see them in the district as essential labs to be open to serve students.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kate, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I, 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 I actually, um, I would, I would underscore everything that Dr. Hall said. Um, and it isn't an easy decision around opening the labs. But it is, but, but the teacher prep pipeline is so important to be able to pro- to provide um, at the community college level, um, the appropriate kinds of education that students need to get in order to become competent teachers at a number of levels. And as the as the commissioner, um, representing the community colleges at the Commission for Teacher Credentialing, I'm working with a group right now that's going to recommend uh, flexibilities for E C E um, the first week in August, um, just as they're doing for teacher prep programs in the K-12s. So we are working in a number of places. You started, I, I did want to say one more thing. You started your comments by mentioning this county COVID-19 committee. And I think I'd like to respond with, um, I think that the faculty, um, the early childhood education faculty in this district, um, has a number of people who would be willing and interested in working with you. Um, so that we're represented well on that committee. Because that committee is looking at countywide community, communities, and that's what we, we consider ourselves part of. We're not only a member of our community colleges and their lab centers, but we are a member of the early childhood community in San Mateo County. So I'd like to offer that.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to take that and I'm going to definitely forward that and I appreciate the offer. Thank you.
Okay, Chancellor, I think we're back. We are responding to Academic Senate President Wallace. You're muted, Chancellor.
Sorry about that. They, they actually, actually the staff likes it when I'm muted. They hear enough from me. But um, I don't know District Academic Senate President Wallace, whether you had any other report, and I really appreciate you updating the board on, on the purpose of what resolutions are. It's, it's helpful. There's a process and, and and I appreciated you taking the time to explain it. Um, that concludes our remarks.
Yeah, I'm going to ask a question to Jeremy, if you don't mind. Um, I really appreciate you explaining the process. I also want to know where do, where do your resolutions go next? They came before the board? I mean.
Yeah, so um, so the way that the resolutions work, at least in the academic senate, is that now that we have this official stance or this official position, it's good, basically falls on the academic senate president to continue to kind of poke um, until we kind of come to some kind of mutual agreement on whatever it is that we're seeking. Um, so, so I mean, for example, with the, the counseling one, like the, you know, like, I'm just going to continue to engage the district administration until we've come to some kind of resolution over counseling appointments. All right, and so, um, yep, so that's, that's basically, and the, the way it works at the, um, the state academic cent level is that um, any, any delegate from any community college can bring a resolution to the state academic senate. And basically, those resolutions are used to give direction to the executive committee of the state academic senate. And so I might bring a resolution saying like, hey, I want the state chancellor to enact some, this type of like policy. Um, in fact, I took a resolution to the, to the state academic senate last fall, asking them to disaggregate formerly incarcerated youth in the equity plans. Right? And so now, after that got passed by the state academic senate, it's up to the executive committee of the state senate to keep working with the chancellor until they find some kind of solution to that, which is hopefully disaggregating formerly incarcerated youth from the, uh, in the equity plan. So.
So what I'm thinking is you've brought this to the board of trustees. Can the board of trustees participate in some way with the academic senate to work with something, a mutual agreement to blend something together? Um, to show our support?
Yeah, I think, well, I think the way it usually works is that, you know, um, that I, I work directly with like the chancellor and the vice chancellor as your delegate. Um, but in the case of the E C E one, in the past no pass, like those were actually actions that we needed from you. The suspension of the past no pass policy was something that you had to vote on. With the E C E resolution, it's like, we're really asking you to reach out to your networks. Um, at the state level to try to get funding for this mentor program, to get us more resources so we can offer the E C E courses online this year. Um, so that's the kind of the extent of the, I guess, the board involvement. Um, but I'm, I'm happy, happy to work with you, but I know that my, my place, my lane is with, with Mike and Aaron. So.
Well, I, I know, I'm not going to speak for the board. I'll speak for myself. I'd just like to go forward and say, how do we make these things work? And sometimes it works with different uh, organizations working together. You get more things done effectively. Uh, trustee Goodman, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just wondering, um, would it? Uh, again, I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn, but would it make sense for um, President Wallace to work with Mitch um, and kind of create some type of um, template for us to work with when we're advocating to our counterparts throughout the county and throughout the state? Um, to, to be able to kind of work to do that and then also uh, create a resolution that we could pass ourselves.
Yes.
Um, and then forward that on, and then whatever we could do locally to answer some of the questions, providing uh, support, any action that's needed. Um, at the two different, or two centers that serve as labs, um, to provide some support and uh, direction around those issues over the coming uh, months.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's a good point. Yeah, it's like, it, yeah, I mean, I think that's perfect, right? Because um, yeah, if you could come up with a resolution that you could send for that obviously has a lot of power behind it as elected officials in the county and the state. Um, and then as far as the child development centers go, you know, like the, I guess what the senate would be looking for is if that's something that the board wants to see happen, like that's what you want, then I would, I think our hope is that you would then direct the district administration to work with us on some mutually agreeable uh, solution to that.
Okay, well, the board president has heard that, and I think we will move in that direction.
Thanks.
Uh, and unless, unless the board, because I don't, don't think that they would uh, use that. Okay, Chancellor, back to you.
Okay, um, and um, and I wanted to confirm, yes, there's a, we're obviously coming to the end of summer session and we do not have any student reports. So that actually concludes our executive, uh, the reports from executives and, and others.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Thank you again, Professor Wallace, for bringing all that to our attention, plus the presidents. Uh, you've mingled in your, your goodbyes, plus some good, good information at the same time. Okay, we're down to statements from other representative groups. I do know we are supposed to have uh, from A F T, their new executive director, Mary Ann Kalinsky, I think. Are you here, Mary Ann? Oh, wait, there's a hand. There she is. There she is.
Hello.
Hello.
Oh, hi, you can hear me. Great.
I can hear you. Welcome.
Good to hear. Thank you. So my name is Mary Ann Kalinsky. I'm the new executive secretary of A F T fourteen ninety-three. And I think most of you know my predecessor, Paul December. So Paul's moved to New Orleans and we all miss him very much, um, already. But I'm really excited to be working now in this capacity and in this district. And I myself was a teacher uh, in various public ed capacities before coming to this position. Um, I was teaching as well as working with labor unions. So I'm, I'm really glad to be working in this capacity. So um, our union is also very happy to have agreed just recently on a memorandum of understanding for summer and fall twenty twenty that recognizes some of the very difficult, in fact, extraordinary challenges faculty members and students are facing right now. Um, as well as the truly incredible amounts of work and care that faculty members have put in to address those challenges and to make sure they're supporting our students as much as possible. So we hope that deans and administrators going forward will be diligent in honoring the provisions of the memorandum of understanding. There are some provisions for faculty who see a need to reduce their course enrollments uh, during this very particular time. Um, provisions for them arranging that first through conversations with their deans. We hope the deans will hear these faculty and recognize that faculty know the needs of their students best, and they know firsthand what students are going through and what they need to succeed in this very challenging environment. And often that is the extra support that faculty are able to provide in smaller classes and, and smaller learning contexts. Um, we also have some provisions for compensation for the overwhelming amount of extra work that faculty have done to keep their courses going and their students supported during the pandemic. Compensation for converting courses for delivery in a distance education format. Compensation for large courses and compensation for training to teach in a distance education context. And so we ask that administrators put systems in place so that faculty can be compensated as smoothly and efficiently as possible for truly this incredible amount of extra work that they've done to ensure our student success. And we look forward also to negotiating um, our longer multi-year contract with the district uh, that ensures fair learning and working conditions.
Okay, Mary, is that good for you?
Yes, it is. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And as I said before, it's good to get to know you. Welcome. Okay, uh, is there anybody from C S C A who would like to make any announcements? Okay, Annette? Hello, there you go. Yes.
Okay, um, hello, how are you doing?
Doing well. How about you?
Oh, just fine. Um, I wanted to also congratulate Brian on his um, achievement. So that's first thing. Um, and so also, we um, met with the, uh, C S A met with the district this morning and we're working out our um, M O U for the COVID nineteen. And I think we're almost um, uh, um, come to terms with it. We haven't finished it yet. We were working on it, and I think we've come to, we're pretty close on it though. Um, and so we've come to an agreement with it. Um, also, we are um, you know, we're making progress on our negotiations on last year's um, contract. So we're making progress and so it's taking a long, a little time, but we're making progress. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that was very positive. We appreciate that. Thank you, Annette. Anybody here from AFSMI, Local H twenty-nine? I don't think so. Okay, we'll go down to statements from the public on non-agenda items. Is there anybody who wanted to speak on something that's not on the agenda tonight? A couple hand raises. John Pimentel, Pimp and Tal?
Yes, Pimentel, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention two items. First, today, the C S U trustees passed an ethnic studies requirement that will require a, a class based on understanding ethnic studies and social justice. So that uh, is a precedent that's now created at our sister system. Secondly, I wanted to ask a question in the introduction. Chancellor Claire went through uh, congratulations for the class of twenty twenty. And I wanted to ask if any data exists focusing on student outcomes. Specifically, there were twenty nine hundred A A degrees issued. Do we know how many of those students successfully transferred to a four-year school? Second, uh, there were twelve hundred certificates issued. Do we know how many of those students actually obtained jobs in the fields in which they were certificated? And lastly, there were two hundred international students who graduated. And I wanted to know if there's any data that shows how many of those international students stayed in San Mateo County in order to contribute to our local economy after graduation. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Uh, Frank E. Are you in the chat?
Dude.
Here we go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, I want, I want to thank, uh, I'm, want to thank all the trustees for helping to get the athletic facility opened on July thirteenth. We really appreciate it. They're doing a great job out there, keeping us safe, socially distancing, making it as convenient as possible for us to make reservations to use the facilities. So thank you all trustees for, and, and staff for making that happen. I do however, want to challenge the trustees. Uh, I know that you are all very interested in making sure that all constituencies are represented. I know that the students are represented. I know that the labor unions and workers are represented. My feeling is that us that are up at the club, all six thousand of us, we also are stakeholders in the university or in the college. And we would like to make sure that we are heard and get an opportunity and be invited to make comments to the board and that our interests also be considered. So I would challenge you to figure out how to make that happen, make it efficient, and make sure that we have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Nigel Hawkins?
Hello, how you doing? My name is, I don't know why my screen isn't showing. But uh,
It's okay. We can hear you.
Would have been great to have this cool t-shirt on, but uh,
Oh.
Uh, hello, my name is Nigel Hawkins. Um, uh, this, I just want to go ahead and discuss how much I appreciate the counselors at, at my college. And uh, this is my second year. Um, I'm B S U president. And um, I graduate in spring twenty twenty-one. So yeah, it's going to be great. So um, just to start off, meeting with counselors at Kenyatta College has always been a comfortable and satisfying experience because they've always gone above and beyond to make sure I receive the helpful resources necessary. I appreciate them so much for the work they do. In uh, from the very beginning of my educational journey, they've made me feel fully aware that I can come to them with any question. Um, they are such great people, very supportive, uh, influential, and um, they continue to guide me on my journey to success and, and um, they just bring out the best version of myself. And um, they've helped me design a direction I like to go in life and they, they have, they have always been warm, caring and welcoming, just like a family. Um, it, it feels good to be part of this community that brings the best out of students. And uh, they are the product of the change needed in this country. And um, uh, they listen to us, students that come from different walks of life. Um, students that may feel that they don't have a voice. Um, they advocate, they, they advocate for those that have struggled in life and don't recognize dreams are obtainable. Um, students like myself that uh, in the past didn't see a hopeful flourishing life. Um, and a promising future, you know, uh, but Kenyatta College, ever since I've came, so it, it's just been guiding me the whole way. I just, uh, it's just such a, a great, um, a, a great opportunity to speak in front of you today and, and tell you that they've been doing so well with us and uh, even during this staying in, staying in place. Um, you know, they're, they're aware of this pandemic that's going on. And uh, among that, that they're aware of the, the, the racism that just, that continues to ride America all the way until now, unfortunately. And um, and just like family, they, they're worried about our safety and well-being. So it's just, um, yeah, it, it feels really good to be able to express how, how thankful I am to have people like that by my side, because I didn't to have people like that by my side because I didn't always grow up with support. And, um, yeah. I guess I would like to just ask, being that I am BSU president and I am a student that, that, um, that recognizes some of the things that, some of the changes that need to happen and some of the, you know, improvements that should come about. I was wondering, how do I, how, how do I gain another chance at this type of platform where I could speak to you?
Well, Nigel, we always have this section on our agenda for when there's a non-agenda item to speak on. Anytime that there is an agenda item that you want to speak on, you're always welcome to speak if these are open meetings. So we do appreciate you spending time with us. We're sorry we can't see that fabulous t-shirt. Maybe next time we can get you connected visually. But you're always, you're always welcome to come if you have anything and we thank you for your time. Okay? Bertha Garcia?
It looks like Bertha's using an older version of Zoom, so we're gonna have to promote her to a panelist if we'd like her to talk.
Sure. Can we, can we do that quickly?
All right, she should be rejoining us. I'm not sure if he's already...
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Bertha.
Thank you so much. Okay, well, hello Board of Trustees and thank you for this time to speak. My name is Astor Bertha Garcia and I am a student marrying and child development at San Francisco State University. However, to get there was not easy. And it will not, it will not be possible if I had not the support for my counselor at Canyada College. She was crucial on my path to community college and achieving my goals to get into the university. First of all, when I just started English as second language classes, I didn't even know that I could start to pursue a career. I was just taking classes to learn the language and obtain my English certificate. That was my goal. However, after two semesters in college, I began, I began to hear comments about Canyada resources and certificates for various careers, but I didn't know what to do or how to make a plan. Furthermore, in one of my classes, people from the counseling department came to the class and gave us information about how we can get a counselor and how they can help us. After a few days, I was able to get an appointment with a counselor. She was the best thing that I could have while attending college. Why? Because she was my savior. She explained to me that the learning journey did not finish when I earned my English certificate. There is a lot more to do, she said. I'm so glad that I had the opportunity to have her as a guide on my journey to college. Otherwise, I will have been lost. My counselor helped me to set up a plan to pursue a career in early childhood education in less than two years. And because as I was going to school, I was finally able to get a job in my profession. She saw the classes that I started taking in 2015 and made a plan for me to be able to finish my educational goals at Canyada and encouraged me to transfer. I was taking classes with a purpose instead of taking classes without the proper orientation. I was so glad that she was there to support me and especially explain to me that no matter how many classes I took per semester, because I ordered 17 to 19 units, she not want me to get stressed and overwhelmed. She want me to enjoy my education. She always was asking me about my classes and how I feel about them. She was my therapist as well because I told her anything about school or personal issues. For example, if I did not feel comfortable with my professors and how hard some classes were for me because of my second language. She was there to listen and provide words of support and encouragement. She talked to me in a way that made me feel a sense of relief. Furthermore, the way she helped and supported me really impact my perspective of how I view education. As a result, in about four years, from 2015 to 2019, I was able to get my English certificate, my child development certificate, my associate's degree and my associate's transfer degree because she guided me to take the classes that I need to obtain what I want and not make the mistake of taking just a bunch of classes that I probably would not need. Now I can tell my friends the importance of having a counselor while they're in college. They supported me, followed my counselor made my journey much easier and more enjoyable. I want to say thank you to my counselor for such a wonderful job. She didn't help me because without her, my life while I was a Canyada will have been miserable, stressful and overwhelming without knowing what to do and where to go. Thanks to her and all the support I received at Canyada, I am where I am now, on my way to earning my bachelor's degree and towards better future for me and my family. Thank you.
Thank you, Bertha.
Can I, um...
Are you asking a question? I don't think so. Vanessa Del Rio?
Hello, are you guys able to hear me now?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, good afternoon, everyone. I would like to introduce myself to the Board of Trustees. My name is Vanessa Del Rio and I am thrilled to be here today. I had the pleasure of working closely with counselors at Canyada College. I am a class of 2020 and I am a psychology and sociology major. I attended Canyada College from 2016 to 2019. I was very fortunate to be a student enrolled in the EOPS program and I was able to work closely with all the staff and counselors there. Counselors at Canyada College in the San Mateo District devote their time to help their students succeed in life. They provide us students with all the resources we need to be proficient in school. Sorry, I don't know if you guys can hear my baby in the background.
Yes, we can. Sounds good.
Sorry for that.
No apologies.
Thank you. Our counselors are very important to helping ensure our future goals and career. Our faculty deserve to be, to be compensated for all the efforts they put into assisting us with a proper education. Despite not having face-to-face classes this year, they, they are just a call or an email away from us. Our counselors advocate for every single one of us by going far and beyond to help us through our journey in school. And they are not just counselors. They are literally our family. My counselor was Lorraine Ramirez. She's an intellectually exceptional woman. Being a full-time student was challenging for me, but working closely with her encouraged me to be successful in school. Aside from being my college counselor, she was my role model in life and I have always looked up to her for her outstanding personality and strong character. Without her guidance, I would have been lost through my college experience. During our meetings, we discussed educational topics and she guided, she guided me through the right path by suggesting which courses I should take to fulfill my major. Without her, I would have most likely taken unnecessary courses and it would have taken longer to major. I am forever grateful for all the time and effort that she has dedicated into my education as well as all the other students who were just as fortunate of working with her. Jose Ramirez, the director of EOPS, is an amazing and generous man whom I had the pleasure to build a strong relationship with. He recruited the best team of counselors to work with all the student members of EOPS. He always makes sure that all students have the proper resources that are suitable for every student to succeed. He ensures us with parking permits, bus passes, pays for our books and lends us technology such as laptops, calculators, et cetera. We have everything we need to be academically successful. Lorraine and Jose were technically my school parents. They were, they are very trustworthy and I feel comfortable talking to them about my personal life. Instead of reaching out to my friends, I reach out to them. I knew they were always there to hear me, to hear me out and provide me with the right advice. It has been an amazing experience working with them. My counselors have helped me financially to pay for my classes, cover my parking permits, pay for my books and enroll in the right courses. They have also helped me outside of school too. I am a Dreamer student and my counselors have assisted me by writing recommendation letters and they have helped me find a legal attorney to represent me for immigration proceedings so that I can remain in this country legally and fulfill my career, my career that I have worked so hard for. I am highly appreciative of all the support that has been provided to me. Our school leaders ensure us a great experience through college. Well, thank you to all the staff and members for allowing me to be a speaker member of this meeting today. And thank you all for taking your time to hear every single one of us this evening.
And thank you. Thank you very much. Your counselor should be proud. We have another speaker, Lane Palms.
Hello, Board of Trustees. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak and I also feel very honored to be amongst the other speakers. I can see that everyone is speaking from their heart. I just want to report to you back that we're very grateful that you were able to extend the contract so that we could return to exercising at our beautiful facility, San Mateo Athletic Club. And I wanted to tell you my impression of the process. That I can tell that a great effort has been put into making sure that we all can return safely to exercise and that many of us are feeling better mentally at this point. Just being able to exercise, it's, you know, as everyone imagines, a very hard time right now. And, um, I, I just wanted to say it's so wonderful to be back there to see the same staff that's smiling at us and greeting us and making sure, like I said, that we're safe. The process has worked very smoothly to sign up for classes. And we're very happy. So I just wanted to say thank you very much and we hope that this can continue and that our county will allow us to keep our beautiful facility open. And so thank you very much for all that you've done to make this possible for us. That's all.
And thank you very much. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised or any other comments. I'm going to move us to new business. We have moved up an agenda item, 27-6C update on the Crystal Springs Cross Country Course. And Chancellor Claire, you are going to provide the report.
Thank you so much, President Schwartz, and thanks for moving this up. I think we have some members of the public that would like to speak in just a bit. I briefed you several times about the Crystal Springs Cross Country Course. I think for the benefit of the public, I know the board is already knows the history, but the College of San Mateo has operated this course, I think, since the early 1970s. And before I go much further, I know we are very grateful to the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission. It is SFPUC land. And I think it's been a wonderful collaboration and partnership over the years to make this, this course really accessible to, first of all, CSM's cross-country team as well as many local runners. I know it's, I know the course is legendary among the running community and I know that that first hill is especially legendary that you have to come back up. I did it once in my life. And over the years, as you know, and again, this is really for the benefit of the public, we, at the College of San Mateo, they've discovered that the use by the cross-country team is really sporadic. I think, I think it's been used two or three times in the last three years, if I recall. Yet, the use among our, our middle, middle schools and especially high schools has increased dramatically. And we find, the district, the college finds itself in the position of trying to manage a facility that we don't really use anymore. But we also recognize, and I know the board does, to the importance of this site, not only to the running community, but to the community at large. So we're trying to find a way in terms of working with the, the, the interested stakeholders, really to come up with a, with a solution that helps us get out of the, the real detailed management because we just don't have the personnel to, to manage a facility that we're not really using. But at the same time, keep that facility open for the best interest of the public. I personally have been contacted by a couple of locally elected officials and I want to, I want to thank them for their time and their attention. I also want to thank some members from the, it's the, if I get it right, it's the Belmont Heights Civic Improvement Association, which is the local homeowners association. This is located in, in, in a neighborhood. So residents in that area have, have been impacted by the increased use. And what, what I'd like to do, I believe we do have some members from Belmont Homeowners Association and they, I believe they actually sent you a briefing. But I feel like, and I'm sure there's others that might want to speak tonight too, so I want to make sure that we leave time for all voices. This is just one group that I happen to be working with. But I feel like the two key stakeholders in, in this have really gotten together and are trying to work on something that really will work for everybody. We're committed to holding the permit. We don't, we don't want to really risk losing the site for the public, but we're trying to find a way that, we're trying to find a way that balances really our ability to manage the course with the needs of the community and the running community. So with that, I don't know if we have some representatives. I know, I'm sure there's other members of the public who want to speak, but I wanted to give the opportunity and if you could do this by hand, right, your hand raised, if you could, if, if the members of the homeowners association perhaps could speak. And I see Bill Kurtz's hand raised and there may be others as well. So as I said, this is the conversation we've had. But again, we certainly want to make sure that others in the community also have a chance to, you can hear their voices. And then we'll take a conversation and direction from the board in terms of next steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Kurtz, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you.
Very good.
Again, I'm Bill Kurtz. I'm representing the Belmont Heights Civic Improvement Association, the BH CIA. We are the neighborhood that circles the course on almost 180 degrees of it. We'd first like to, to give a big thanks to CSM for, for all it's done for nearly 50 years of keeping this space open to not only the neighborhood and residents, but the local youths who run cross-country there. There's a lot of history and a lot of champions that have gone off to greater places and colleges and so forth that have run at this course. The, um... May, some of the, the issues that the neighborhood has had is, as you may be aware, there are a lot of people that attend the events besides just the runners. There are too many events right now and the scale of the events has almost gotten out of hand and it's creating a lot of concern with people from an environmental standpoint. That being said, um, we were very devastated at the announcement that the course could possibly shut down. So what we, we have done to say, we don't want this to happen, even though we, we have issues in, in the neighborhood. Over the last few months, we have had productive meetings with the CCS, which is the Central Coast Section, the organization which represents high school sports. We've worked to create a community-based cooperative management proposal, which I believe we sent to each of the trustees and to Chancellor Claire. As part of our cooperative management proposal, we, we've agreed that we would engage a third-party nonprofit organization which would manage the actual physical running of the course itself, of, of the events. These people work... These people work currently with all of the high schools in supporting them with officials for basketball, football, all their other events. They're a nonprofit, so their engagement in working with us is, is, is a nice arrangement, split it that way. We hope that, that CSM agrees that, that our cooperative management proposal is, is a great way forward to address not only the neighborhood concern, but to allow local youth to benefit from running on the course. It resolves around empowering the interest of all the parties to work together, the neighborhood, the, 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 the high school sports, as well as the middle school sports organizations. So we're sort of answer any questions that anybody might have. There are representatives, I believe, from CCS, as well as the Silicon Valley Sports Association, to see what, what, what you might have for us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kurtz. I think I'll go to the next speaker, and then board members, after all the speakers, can kind of come back for questions, if that's okay? Is it Steve, I'm sorry, Filillos?
Steve Filios.
Sorry, sorry about that.
Oh, no, no, don't worry about that. My wife butchers it. First of all, I want to thank the trustees and Chancellor Claire and all of his, the athletic staff of CSM for providing a very special venue that has served the athletic, the high school athletic community, which I represent, the CCS. I'm the Assistant Commissioner of the CCS, and I'm our office liaison for, for cross-country specifically. And we can't thank enough all the efforts that have gone into the course over the last 50 years. And as Bill mentioned, and Bill actually stole all my notes, and so that's why all his presentation was, I think, stolen from what I was going to say to you. But I want to reiterate our thanks to CSM for everything they've done for the high school community, or the running community as well, for that matter, on, on providing a very, very special historic venue. I also want to say that we are in complete support of being part of the solution, I guess you'd say, or part of a cohort or combine, or whatever you want to call it, in order to have another 50 years of cross-country at Crystal Springs in a situation that might be not only beneficial to the runners that use it in our, our high schools, but also recognizing the respect for the community that where the course is located and working with them on moving forward in a, in agreeable fashion that would service everybody and respect the neighborhood. And as Bill's mentioned earlier, if I'm available for any questions, but we certainly would like to be part of things. And as, as Bill mentioned, we've been in, in Zoom meetings for several months and trying to go ahead and, and hear the concerns and hopefully be part of the solution.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, board members, do you have questions for the chancellor or the two speakers about the Crystal Springs Cross Country Course?
Yes. Yeah, so I guess I'm, I'm very pleased that we pivoted from the narrative of just completely shutting it down and walking away with regards to our responsibility to the community in ensuring that, that Crystal Springs is remaining open. So I appreciate that. My, my concern is, though, if someone could speak to, through this management deal, how it will address the issues that were, I guess, brought up by the community. I think there were some issues around the parking. There were some suggestions, actually by a ninth grader, that reached out and suggested that we have parents and students park at a local school and probably shuttle up. There were some ideas around that, how that would address some of the concerns. Some, some other ideas were charging an additional fee for that management of it. So just wondering, when you talk of bringing both sides together and finding resolution, can you speak to some of the issues that have been brought up and assure us that those concerns are being addressed?
Chancellor, do you have answers to that, or would that go to the public people?
I think to the public, probably.
The public people, okay. Okay, Mr. Kurtz? I need to
Okay, I did. Thank you. In, in talking with, in, in working with CCS, we have looked at the, the scheduling that is, is currently out there. And there are a lot of events that we have looked at that could be classified as essential versus non-essential. Some events are just strictly fundraising events. They could be, other events could be done at other locations. There could be a, on, on a, on a particular day, there could be a doubling up of, of meets between a couple of different schools. So that right now, the way the schedule is set up, there's almost two weeks in a row of solid events every day. There are ways that the CCS can schedule that would eliminate that and sort of alleviate some of that congestion on a daily basis. We can also, as the trustee indicated, move some of the heavy, these large buses that, that come up and clog and block the streets and park on the, on the streets for hours and hours, where they could drop kids off and even possibly come over and park it at the CSM parking lot. But there, there are some options that, that could be available to help alleviate some of that congestion. So we, we have solutions. I think we'll work with, with those between the neighborhood and the CCS with the cooperative. And if, if we're not able to come up with a solution, it's not going to be good for either one of us, because the, the end result would be giving up the permit by CSM and closing the course. So we don't want that to happen. So I believe we'll come up with some amiable solutions to make this happen.
Okay, thank you. Charles Stone, you have your hand raised. Would you like to speak to that question?
Oh, no, I just wanted to make a comment, if this is appropriate time.
That's fine, sure.
Very fantastic. My name is Charles Stone. I'm the Vice Mayor of the City of Belmont. I'm speaking here tonight on my own behalf. I just wanted to thank all the trustees and the chancellor for your hard work during this crisis. There's possibly no worse job than being a locally elected school trustee with all the various balls you have to juggle and logistics you have to manage. I applaud your, your decision to leave the cross-country course open. Thank you to many of you for taking the time to speak with me over the last several months and with members of the county governing apparatus to try to find a long-term solution, which I'm confident we will. In the meantime, it's been tremendously reassuring to me to know that we're in no danger of losing this tremendous community asset anytime soon. And I am completely confident that between your leaders, leaders of the city of Belmont, the leaders of other cities and the county, along with stakeholder input, that we're going to find an even better model than we have right now that allows the public and our student community to use this precious asset for years to come while addressing the concerns of, of the neighborhood. So thank you very much. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Honorable Stone, Councilman Stone. So trustee Goodman, did Mr. Kurtz answer your question, or?
Yes, I believe so. I just, I mean, my, my concern is, is making sure that neither side feels threatened. Obviously, both sides should be motivated to find a solution, but I, I don't agree with that if we don't come to a solution, then the only alternative is we'll lose the permit. I think that's a board decision, and I wouldn't want us to be thinking that far ahead. I do want, I encourage both sides to come together. I do believe that we should find a resolution, listening to all the alternatives, and, and making sure that we all understand that even with an outside management agreement with the third party, that it is still ultimately our name on the site, and, and we have standards that we should be held to with regards to our responsibility to our community in ensuring those standards are met.
Thank you. Other trustees, do you have comments or questions on this issue? Trustee Manuel Karen?
I just want to thank the representative, Mr. Kurtz, from the homeowners association up there, and Mr. Filios, I think it was, if I got that right from CCS, for coming and speaking tonight and for sharing the documents with us and for, you know, spending time ahead of time briefing us on, on this issue. I also want to thank Chancellor Claire for your time and effort on this, and the athletic department staff from CSM as well for dealing with this. It's, you know, probably not the most urgent issue that we've been faced with in the past few months, given the COVID-19 pandemic we've been dealing with. But it's obviously been a very important issue to a lot of stakeholders who have reached out to us on the board and let us know what their thoughts are. And so I'm very happy that, you know, what we had set out to do, and then again, just to clarify that, in spite of what may have been heard out there, I don't think there was ever any statement that this facility was going to be closed down. That was, you know, rumor out there that was not founded in anything that this board had ever said. And, you know, we, we are the deciding authority for this facility, and I think our goal has always been to find a way to keep this facility open and to make it available and accessible to the members of the public and the high schools and the middle schools that are using the facility in a reasonable way. So I'm really pleased, which is, I think, what we were all after as we went through this process, is find some people who have more skin in the game, that really are the, the stakeholders that are using this facility, that want to make sure it's run in a way that's responsible, that's sensitive to the concerns of the neighbors and the surrounding neighborhood around this facility, so that they're not inundated by crowds, buses, noise, trash, and everything else that goes on up there during these events, yet still keeps this facility open and accessible to the many high school and middle school runners who use it heavily during the cross-country season every year. And it really appears that you've done a very good job of coming up with solutions. So I'd encourage that process to keep moving forward and for, you know, our district to remain involved with, with our role as the permit holder and, you know, ultimate, you know, governing authority over that site. I think you've got a good plan. If there's others, councilmember Stone or members of the county that have other ideas or alternatives, I think we're, we're open at this point to ideas, but this is the one that's come forward at the moment, and it seems pretty good. And if, you know, if there's other inputs, I think sure we would love to hear it, but I'm just very happy to see that this is moving forward in a way that seems to be very positive from all sides. And so I applaud you all for working together in good faith to come up with a solution for this.
I agree. Any other comments or questions from board members? Okay, Chancellor, I'm putting it back to you. What's your next?
Sure. So first of all, I really, I appreciate the discussions that I've had with some of our locally elected officials, Vice Mayor Stone, it was really nice to meet you. And someday, I guess, we, we may even meet in person, and thank you for your, your input. I'm especially grateful to the Belmont Heights Civic Improvement Association. I got that right, and I had the opportunity, and, and some of us did, to meet with the officers. And you've all been really great to work with, very reasonable. And it is really great to see that the CCS and, and you are working together. I'm going to take your comments as sort of board direction to continue to foster this relationship, where we, we really kind of work with these two entities to facilitate something that, that will be workable. I, I applaud everybody. I think we've got a, a solution that's going to work for everyone, and I appreciate it. So that, that's really the end of my comments, unless there's any, any, any specific board direction that I've left out.
No, this is how democracy works. Take a lesson, people. It's great. So thank you. Okay, I think we're going to move on to the next agenda item. 20-738, Approval of Personnel Items, Changes in Assignment, Compensation, Placement Leave, Staff allocations and Classification of Academic and Classified Personnel. Motion and a second to get it on the floor, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Second, thank you, Vice President Nourist. Human Resource Director David Hune is available if there's any questions. Any comments or questions from the public? And any comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, am I correct? None? I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. 20-74A, Approval of the Allocation of Total Compensation and Adoption of New Salary Schedule for Employees in the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, otherwise known as ASME, AFL-CIO Local 829 Council 57 Bargaining Unit. You had a motion? Thank you, and a second? Thank you. Again, David Hune is here from, from the Human Resources. Are there any comments or questions from the public? Any comments or questions from board members? Hearing none, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. 20-75A, Approval of the Allocation of Total Compensation and Adoption of Salary Schedules for the Non-Represented Employees on Salary Schedules 35, Academic Classified Exempt Supervisory. I guess that means schedules 35, Schedule 40, Classified Professional Supervisor, and 50, Confidential. Again, I need a motion and a second?
So moved.
Thank you, thank you.
Second.
Human Resource David Hune is still available if we have any questions. Are there any comments or questions to the public? I see no hands raised. Any comments or questions from board members? Seeing none, I think I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, all approved.
Stay.
Oh, one abstention. Thank you, trustee Goodman. So we have four ayes, one abstention, and motion has carried by unanimous vote. Approval of the Consent Agenda, 20-71CA, Approval of Budgetary Transfers for the Period Ending May 31, 2020, and Adoption of Resolution 20-13 Authorizing Budget Revisions and Transfers for 2019-20. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the whole consent agenda. 20-72CA, Acceptance of Gifts by the District. So we, we want, anybody want to remove? Can we take them together? I think so.
Prove approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. You got me out of that one. So I need a motion and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we're not removing it. We're going to vote them all at one time. Is there any comments or questions? No? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Other Recommendations, 20-7101B, Approval of the 2022-2026 Five-Year Capital Construction Plan. Motion and a second for discussion, please.
So moved.
Thank you, thank you. Vice Chancellor, Facilities and Planning, Maintenance and Operation Jose Nunes is here for any questions. Are there any public comments? I have a hand raised. Who could it be? Maxine? You okay, Maxine? Unmute yourself. I'll be unmuted. Maxine Turner, be unmuted, please.
I've unmuted Maxine, but I think she needs, there she goes.
Am I?
Yeah, we got you. You're in.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of questions and one observation. For the, as you know, I think I sent you all a lengthy email trying to follow how the five-year capital program fits into bond measures and your, and your facility master plan. So question number one is, please clarify whether, and I think it should be part of the staff report, clarifying whether the projects that are included in your five-year plan are in your current facilities' master plan. And I think the most recent was the 2015 amendment. I'd also like staff to identify what the funding in local funds are for the items in, I'd also like staff to identify what the funding in local funds are for the items in, excuse me, in section one, particularly the funding for the Skyline College Building Two. That's $22.9 million in local funds, and I don't believe that's part of the bond. So I'd like to have the source of funding and the amount of funding that's under the category of local. And I would like to note that the projects in sections two through four, the next six items that do not have funding, that you're trying to get some state funding for, that had you, assuming you do not get state funding, the total cost of all of those projects as listed in your report come out to $163 million. And ironically, that's the amount of money that was spent for building one and the Environmental Science Center. That was not in your facility master plan. So you could have funded your priority projects had things not gotten diverted to projects, as you know, I've had serious questions about, particularly since they were never identified in the bond. So thank you for allowing me to speak and it's very impressive. Just want you to know that I value and appreciate all the work that's going on trying to cope with COVID-9.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members? Trustee Oliver?
So in reviewing what's in this list, we have different different projects that are at different stages of either being built or being before, I guess, the DSA or other approving agencies. And then some of this looks like it's what we would do if only we had the money. And I know we do this every, I think every, I don't know, it seems like every year.
Every year.
Every year. So I know there's a wish list aspect to this. When I went through it, a question for staff, when I went through it, with the exception of the buildings that are already in the middle of being built, so the ones that are are wish list, for lack of a better term. My reading is that they are all projects that are related to the education of our students and not projects that are for things that we generally use the umbrella term of enterprise. In other words, for other purposes that are not primarily for students. I just want to verify from, ask staff, if you could verify that that is the case for all the new things that we are asking the state to consider funding.
This is Jose Nunez, Vice Chancellor of Facilities. Trustee Oliver, you are absolutely right. All of these projects that we are requesting state funding for are all directly directed toward student instructional-type needs. And if I can just take a few minutes, President Schwartz, let me go through, I know it's a comprehensive report, but let me see if I can summarize it. And in the summary, I can probably address some of Maxine's questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. If you go to page forty-six, in there, you'll see that I have Kenyatta thirteen, CSM Water Tank, and Sky Building Two. Those three projects together are about $67 million. Half of that money, about 32.9, is Measure H funding, and then the other 34.2 is state funding. Again, that's page forty-six. We have a match, state funding, the match is Measure H. If you go to page forty-seven, in there, going to one of Maxine's questions for the fiscal year 2122, you have Kenyatta Theater, total project is about $38 million, and then you have CSM nine, total project is about 35.6, almost $36 million. Okay, total project, well, part of that, 50%, if you will, if you break that into categories, half of it is state-funded, about $36.6 million, and the other half, there is no identifiable funding source for that. And then, you know, that is a challenge, that come fiscal year 2122, more likely 2223, we'd have to come up with about $36, $37 million match money. Right now, there is no local funding, as stated in the report, as identified for that right there. So to Maxine's question, is this a wish list? You know, these are projects that we put into the state to see if we can get match money. And right now, the state has approved these projects and some of the challenge that Bernada and I have talked about along with Peter Simmons and Mike Claire is, you know, we need to identify the funding for that because there is no Measure H dollars allocated right now. In fact, Measure H is exhausted. I also want to bring to your attention that if you go to page fifty-one, in there for fiscal year 2223, you see Skyline Building Five, Library Learning Resource Center, it's a full modernization project. You know, that project is about $27 million. If, in fact, the state approves that for 2223, that's another $13.7 million of local match that the district doesn't have. So I just, you know, again, put it out there for fiscal year 2122, almost $37 million. For 2223, almost a little under $14 million. Those are local match dollars that we don't have. And in there, there is a challenge, that if we want to accept the state matching dollars, you know, we need to develop a strategy. Okay? And then finally, if you go to section five, in there, there's a list of all of the locally funded projects. These are Measure H projects. Kenyatta One Kinesiology, $120 million, Can 22, $6 million, CSM Three, $6 million. These are all projects that are underway right now. CSM nineteen, Facelift, $7 million, that is underway right now, this is funded. CSM Edison Lot, also under construction, and of course, Sky One Facelift, that's in the design. That comes up to a total of about $160 million, all funded with Measure H project. And I will add that the Kenyatta thirteen project that's currently at DSA, the Sky Building Two Modernization Project that's currently at DSA, and the CSM Water Tank that's currently at DSA, combined with the state local match, that's about $67 million. So these are all projects that are underway right now. The challenge really is, and again, if you go to page forty-seven, it's that 37, almost $37 million matching fund. And if you go to page fifty-one, if we do get approved for Sky Five Modernization, it's that almost $14 million, which there is no match. Maxine, I don't know if I answered your questions in that quick, brief summary, and I know I'm summarizing it, but the detail really is in the board report.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Chancellor Nunez. And Trustee Oliver answered your questions. Okay, Trustee Mandelker?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chancellor Nunez. I think you answered a lot of the questions. But this was an agenda item, and we had questions from a member of the public, which it is appropriate for us to engage in discussion and answer these questions during this topic. And so I want to make sure that we did get answers to all of the questions that Ms. Turner raised. And there was a couple of points that she raised that I'm not sure I agree with, and perhaps either Vice Chancellor Nunez or Chancellor Claire could comment on, which was the Kenyatta Building One and Skyline Building Twelve not being part of the bond project disclosures. And I believe we've rehashed this before several times, and I believe the conclusion from, you know, our legal team and our bond financing team on this has been that, yes, it was part of that. But perhaps Vice Chancellor Nunez or Chancellor Claire could comment on that and address those questions or comments that Ms. Turner raised.
Again, this is Jose Nunez, Vice Chancellor of Facilities. It was addressed in our Facilities Master Plan Amendment. I want to say it was 2015. Those two projects are identified there, and we have discussed this several times with our Bond Oversight Committee meeting, and, you know, we are within the purview of our bond project list for these two projects.
Mike? Yeah, and I'm nodding my head. I mean, we've received word from legal counsel several times on this, and they are the true experts. And we essentially made that bond offering in accordance with the law. So I don't know what else to add to that.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions from board members? Okay, are we ready to move on? That was a...
President Schwartz?
Have to vote, yes.
I just want to reiterate in the public forum that if, you know, there is a $37 million issue for fiscal year 2122 in terms of state matching funds, and then possibly a $14 million issue for fiscal year 2223, end of statement.
Just a quick question. When would, when, so we submit this, and when do we find out what they're going to fund?
Well, as a matter of fact, the fiscal year 2122, those projects are approved by the state. Now, it's up to the governor and him passes his legislation, I think it happens in August or September, Bernada, correct me if I'm wrong, where these projects become approved. Do we need to have the exact matching fund immediately? No. Why? Because of the design process, and normally, you know, your soft costs are upfront, you know, those are just several million dollars. You know, you really won't need this until you get into the hard construction costs.
So just, so I understand, so is there kind of one step that they're approved? And then a second step that they're funded by the state?
That is correct. They get approved by the California Community College Chancellor's Office. They are submitted to the Board of Governors, and then the Board of Governors, and Bernada, you can probably speak to this more eloquently than I can. You know, they're on a list, and then, you know, it's up to the governor and his team to determine, okay, the list is valid, move it forward. Or you know what? The list is not valid, you know, because we've had projects before that have been approved and then taken off the list, and then, needless to say, I've gone into battle with the folks up in Sacramento to get them back up on the list. Bernada, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, thank you so much, Jose. So it's, we have had some projects approved, as Jose mentioned. And unfortunately, they do require now a match under the Prop 51. And we have some dollars set aside for a match, but not all the dollars that are needed to make those projects materialize. And we will be having conversations with Jose, as well as Chancellor Claire and the whole construction team to see if we actually can make those construction projects happen. Because without the available funding, and given that we have so much constraints on our budget, given the COVID-19 and all the other reductions in the budget, as we will be speaking in a few minutes, you know, there may not be available funding for some of those projects. And we may have to discuss whether we can do one project or two and have, and very soon, we'll have those conversations with the facilities. And if we do not have funding available, then we most likely would have to revert that to the state.
And I would just add that reverting funds to the state, once a project is approved, it takes five, six, sometimes seven years to get up on the list, and even just to get a nod. And the fact that these projects were approved, that's a huge hurdle. And to basically deny the project and send it back to the state is not a good thing.
It hurts big time, right?
It hurts hugely, yes. Any other questions, President Schwartz?
I don't know. Trustee Oliver? Okay. I think we are ready to vote for approval?
Just, I wanted to make sure that we answered the questions from the members of the public.
I think I did. If one of the question was, are they on the Facilities Master Plan, I responded yes. And second one, you know, funding, local, what does that mean? Well, when you say funding local, the majority of it is Measure H and some residual Fund Four, which are local funds. And then sections two through four, what the total cost, I think I delineated that. And it's all spelled out in the report.
Okay, thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second on the floor, and we've had lengthy discussion. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Move to twenty-seven-one-O-two-B, approval of the Menlo Park Kenyatta College CCCE collaborative programming. Need a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Thank you. And we have CCCE Executive Director Jonathan Bissell and Kenyatta Workforce Director Liam Branch are here for, if there are any questions. Are there any public comments on this item? I don't see any. Board members have questions or comments? I hear, here I see none, so I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, aye. Motion passes. Twenty-seven-one-O-three-B, approval of memorandum of understanding with South San Francisco Unified School District regarding Skyline College, Skyline College Middle College. We need a motion and a second to discuss. Thank you. Skyline College interim President Jackson is hopefully still here to available to answer any questions. Are there any comments of the public? Seeing none. Are there any comments or questions from the board? One, two, three, four, I don't see any. Very good. Yay, I'm so happy that we're doing this. So kind of call for the vote. All in favor, aye. Motion approved. Twenty-seven-one-O-four-B, approval of memorandum of understanding with the Samatero Union High School District regarding Skyline College Middle College. Need a motion and a second for the approval of the MOU. Thank you, thank you. Again, President Jackson will be here for answering questions. Any public comment? Seeing none. Board discussion, questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, aye. Motion passes. Information reports, twenty-seven-two-C, discussion of board direction on revising the standing meeting item relating to contemporary conversation regarding race, class, gender, privilege, and equity. At prior meetings, this board has expressed its interest in refining the standing agenda item relating to contemporary conversation regarding race, class, gender, privilege, and equity. So this is an opportunity for board to discuss what it wants the purpose of this, or modify it, and to be in how it should be structured and considered. Additionally, what topics or areas would the board want to cover under this item? So it's an open discussion, really stemming from our last meeting. I think there was quite a few comments made that maybe we had got off track a little bit, or, so let's go back to our original thinking. Are we okay? Do we want to enhance it? So I throw it out to you, and who wants to go first?
I will, I guess.
Looking at you, Trustee Goodman. Go ahead.
So I guess I'm partially responsible for making it the standing item on our agenda sometime last year. And the rationale was to create opportunities, a continuous opportunity for the board to engage faculty and staff on issues of race, class, gender, and equity on a monthly basis, basically. And we've had conversations or study sessions in the past where we had the back-and-forth dialogue, and that was great and proved very helpful as we went through the years. And so I figured it would be an evolution of those conversations by having us create a baked-in ten-to-fifteen-minute conversation for topics of the day with opportunities to bring attention or have the board bring attention in passing resolutions in support of, for example, the different months. So obviously, if we're having a fifteen-minute conversation, we can definitely have the board acknowledge, whether it's Black History Month, you know, Pride Month, or something like that, but actually... but actually follow up with a conversation and dialogue back and forth on topics of the day and how that relates to our students, how that affects the work that we are doing on a daily basis, and how the decisions that we make as a board are impacted on some of the conversations that we're having. And so that was the expectation. There was not, I know over the past year, it has evolved from what we expected and what we ended up with over the last, I guess, three or four months in dealing with COVID, obviously, but also just really having a lot of responsibility put on our staff, meaning administrative staff, the chancellor's staff, of trying to coordinate what to do. And it became probably something that we did not intend. So I would welcome some input from the board as to whether this is, not just the board, but our faculty and staff that's on the call as well. Just how can we reimagine this and still have the same outcomes that we saw a few years back where we had the very rich dialogue at our study sessions around race, class, gender and equity, but also trying to implement it in a way that it's timely?
Thank you for that. I'm in agreement. Any comments from anybody? Trustee Oliver?
So I would also look back to some of the conversation we had, the presentation we had at our last board meeting where I believe, at least our academic senate president and maybe another presenter, who have, you know, observed our board meetings for quite a long time, described kind of what goes on when that topic is raised. And mostly, not always, but mostly, it's not different except for the title than presentations that we have received for a great many years. And those can be on, you know, a number of topics, including activities around LGBT issues or dates of note, activities around immigrant student concerns, and, you know, sort of go down the list where it does feel mostly it's a presentation of, here are the wonderful things we're doing, you know, here are the wonderful activities that we had on each of the campuses and who participated. And then the board says, you're doing a great job and, you know, we're with you, and that's wonderful. So this, I don't, I want to choose my words carefully, but it seems like routine, very significant, very important activities that we all, I believe, agree are very, very important have been used to kind of fill this agenda item, which I think, you know, even when it first appeared a couple of years ago and then continued with, when trustee Goodman was president, was more of a, I don't know what the frequency, but, you know, an occasional deeper dive into issues. So that's my, my thought is that it should maybe be reserved for a deeper, but not every single board meeting conversation about something bigger. And again, I'm trying to be really careful because I'll take that back. I'm not saying it's not big, but, you know, a dialogue that's like more of a, you know, soul searching discussion than a report that we all can applaud and say, good for us. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Other board members? Trustee Magalcar.
Thank you, President Schwartz. I think where this item has worked well is when we've actually used it as an opportunity to understand an issue and discuss ways that we can really address institutional racism and systemic injustice and topics like that within our institution or within the world around us that affect us. I'm thinking of things, for example, when we discussed placement exams and prerequisites and how that was, you know, basically an institutional racism activity that was, that was sidetracking our students, preventing them from making forward progress and getting their education. And we made changes around that, and that was a good thing. And we had a great discussion at the last meeting around achievement gaps and minding the gap and things that we can do. And got some really good discussion around, you know, a model and a template that we can use going forward. And that was very helpful. So I think, and, you know, I think there are another example, I think, which maybe wasn't under this board topic, but was certainly, I think, in the same vein, was discussing the issues around public safety, both within, historically, when we've had the discussions on our own public safety department, and then more recently, when we discussed the Police Academy, the Public Safety Consortium and what's happening on our campus. And this, I think that was a very meaningful discussion that was very informative. So to the extent that we can have those kind of conversations that result in some concrete change or, you know, illumination of issues and education around those issues, this is a good thing. And so I would, I would really like to see us focus on those kinds of discussions under this agenda topic.
Thank you. Trustee Harris.
Yes, I would agree with that as well. And, you know, I really think that obviously, there's a place for us to showcase the activities that are going on at each of our campuses to celebrate the achievements and the commemorations of the type of things that are important to our community and that are important to our students, which we have done on the various months. But, I mean, in line with what we have been seeing in the world, especially in this country the last several months, and with the type of information and sharing and heightened consciousness that has been brought to our district, especially through the concept of, you know, minding the obligation gap and moving in that area towards achieving more educational equity, I think that we need to create a forum that is going to be just for that. But I think, I'm hoping that we're going to be moving in a more structured way as a district to be able to look at these things, not only just have the conversations, but then acknowledge the fact that we are going to be leaders in making change in any way that we are able to do. And I understand, as we all do, that this isn't going to happen overnight. The world will not change overnight, but we need to start taking the steps. And I'm looking to people that have the way that, the knowledge and the ability to help guide us through this at this point so we can start moving in that direction. And so maybe we need to work this part of it separate from the part which just acknowledges the celebrations and that, and then make a place for some meaningful, meaningful programs of change and moving towards educational equity. I think that's, we need to have both.
Agreed. Trustee Goodman.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, trustee Norris. I do believe they should be separate. I do acknowledge that at the time, again, we were not doing either. And so obviously, when you're, when you're president, you have certain privileges. And setting the agenda was a privilege that I took very seriously, and I wanted to make sure that there was intentionality behind trying to shift the norms and the culture of what we celebrated and ensuring that we were culturally responsive to our community. And so with that said, I guess it evolved from having the conversations and focusing on race, class, and just trying to throw everything in there. And it became an issue where we were saying, hey, let's celebrate pride, let's do this. But it was, became an either or, and the conversation kind of fell off because there was so much information and effort put in the celebration aspect of what we were doing. So I don't see it as either or. I do agree that if it's important to us, if this is something that's important to this board, it should be something that's done separate and apart. And I do believe equally, those conversations, those critical conversations are very important to the work that we do. The chancellor mentioned last week, or at our last board meeting, that that's a great, one of his initiatives for us is anti-racism moving into the next year. With that being a very major effort of this board in our district, it definitely stands to reason that that is an ongoing conversation, even if it means we have check-ins quarterly and we have these conversations probably every other meeting or something like that. But there has to be a sense that, yes, it's us recalibrating and saying, these things are important to us. Now, it may not have been done in the most optimal way by saying, you know, what we ended up with at the last few meetings. But what we can all agree on it is that these things are, these components that we're adding to our board meetings are very important to us moving forward. So it's just a matter of, you know, how do we do that? And so if it means ensuring that we do celebrate in a meaningful way the celebrations that we were talking about, not saying do away with them, making us choose between celebrations or critical conversations, but make sure that we acknowledge, hey, these celebrations are important to who we are as a district, but also acknowledge having critical conversations is important, shouldn't be forced. I do believe that the only responsibility on administrative side is really, if you were to come up with a topic and say, and working with the president, whomever that might be, and say, hey, is this a good topic for us to have? And then really facilitating, having someone facilitate that conversation as we did in the past. I think it was Lasana that's done it before in the past, and then also we had Jeremiah Sims facilitated in the past as well. So it's just a matter of facilitating a conversation, how we do it. I leave that to our staff, but I do want us to make sure what comes out of this is an opportunity for us to solidify what's important to us, that it is important that we celebrate our community and a diverse community, but it's also important for us to, as an educational community, that we critically look at everything we do and how it impacts our very diverse student population.
If I could just, if I could just, last, that year that you were the president was my first year, and I thought that that was a very important part of our agenda. I hadn't seen it on any other boards that I was on, and I thought it was a really a great thing. And I guess really where we are at this point is an evolution. We're taking it from one to another spot, and we're evolving it. And hopefully, we are addressing all of the important things that need to be addressed. And by looking at it and talking about it again tonight and continuing in the future, we'll evolve it to make it even more meaningful and important to all of our students and to our district and to continue to raise consciousness about these important issues. And I think we will come up with a good plan to be able to do both of these things and to move forward. So, but I think, you know, it was great that one year we did move forward. I don't know what it was before, but I thought it was a very good thing, and I'd like to see it continue.
Yeah, I just want to say that I wonder if we try to do too much in too short of a time, if we could take a deeper dive into a subject and give it more, more, more time, like we did last week. I mean, last meeting, I thought that we really went into the obligation gap very deeply, and we had, you know, a lot of different speakers and whatnot. So we learned. I would never like to, I would continually like to see this board always honor the different diversity that we have with all of our different students and faculty and staff, to make some time for that on a continual basis. But that can be short and sweet, actually. And sometimes that's brought into, we haven't had a lot of student reports because of what the situation we're in last, so maybe we're missing some of that. So I'm wondering if we should look at something as directing staff to, like, let's look at something, maybe not at every, every meeting, but having a very meaningful meeting about a topic. And for board members to feel free to say, hey, I would like you to have this topic, this, this subject of a certain topic at a certain time next month or something like that, so get a little more broader. Trustee Magalcar.
Yeah, well, I think I'm in agreement with what you're saying, President Schwartz, but I think it's important not to confuse the two things. I think that might be what the concern that led to this discussion tonight is that, you know, we don't replace having these deep, critical discussions that actually result in action with simply, you know, sort of having a congratulatory, oh, great, we had a float in the pride parade or whatever type of thing, which is great, you know, it's good there, students are doing this, that we recognize these celebrations. But that's not a replacement for having these critical conversations. And I think that may be kind of the, a bit of the backsliding that we've had this year is that we stopped having as many critical conversations, it had more of the just, oh, it's Black History Month, let's celebrate that and have a resolution, it's Pride Month, great, you know, let's talk about what we did recognize as Pride Month, and that's not the same thing.
No, no, I absolutely agree with that. That's what I'm saying. I think we need to have a broader conversation of a topic and not mix it up too. Trustee Oliver?
Just moving to another piece of this, I also want to make sure that members of the public are able to look at our board agenda and quickly understand what items are coming before us for possible action. And, you know, this heading, it's kind of a dense thing to read through. And there was one occasion, I just want to point out, where it was just the heading, you know, conversation race, class, gender, privilege and equity, when in fact, the topic for discussion was, or possibly taking a position on an assembly bill that Assemblyman Berman was authoring, which was controversial, no question. But no one would have known that that was the topic. It wasn't even included, you know, at the end, you know, discussion of assembly bills such and such. So I just also want to make sure that as we do what I think we're all, you know, wanting to do with this is be transparent about what is an action item or a discussion that could lead to an action. So members of the public really understand that this would be the meeting for them to, if they want to speak, to speak at.
Other comments from employees of the district?
Well, all, is it okay if I speak? You see me? Okay, yeah. So I really appreciate that we were able to bring this back for a conversation. And I like the word recalibrate because I, I too was, you know, remember when we first started these conversations. So I 100% agree with the comments. And I'm just going to make a statement, you know, every, every meeting is important, every agenda item is important. But the most important work we do, in my opinion, what we're really all about is the conversations we need to have about how we are going to make our institution better for our students. And I, I'll get off my soapbox and now, in my opinion, we need to spend time and attention. And the more we can spend time and attention with the board, I agree, I think, I think I'd rather have fewer, but really deep dives, so we can really have conversations that are meaningful, that lead to action or as an update on what's been asked of us. I think we'll, we'll move in the right direction and really get ourselves talking about education, which is really important. Like I said, everything else on here is important, but what we're all about is, I think, what's under that topic.
Any other comments? We're welcome. Hearing none, are you ready to move on? My goodness. So we will, president and vice president will work with staff to try to make this some works interesting item. I don't know if that's not quite the right word, but see if we can make some changes. But feel free as to let us know what you think you would like to hear more about or get more involved in, in the future. Okay, 20-7-3C, a budget update in advance of the fiscal year 2021 adopted budget. Chancellor Claire and CFO Slater will provide this report.
Okay, thank you, President Schwartz. And, you know, I think a number of you made comments a couple of meetings back that, you know, by the time you get to the adopted budget, it's, it's really kind of a fait accompli, right? And that you'd like more opportunity to provide at least policy level input on the budget. And so we took your comments to heart. I think my goal is by the time we get to the adopted budget, there's no surprises. And I'm not suggesting that we're going to update you with every meeting on budget, but there's not a lot of meetings left before we get to the final adopted budget. So, you know, budget is really just a plan, and as conditions change, plans change. And I'm going to turn it over to Bernata. I've asked her to go very quickly. We're not going to rehash everything because we've given you a pretty thorough update. You will not hear from me about the 50% law and the mechanics of that tonight. But what we really want
But what we really want to do is just kind of provide an overview of what's happened since you approved the tentative budget. We're also going to ask some policy direction questions and get guidance from you on that so that we can really complete our work towards a final adopted budget. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bernard. And I want to also acknowledge really the immense help of Kathy Blackwood. She's just been so wonderful with her time and it's appreciated. And I think Kathy's somewhere on this call. So thank you, Kathy, for your help as well. Bernard, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mike. Do I have, may I ask for access to screen sharing so I can start my slides?
You have it.
Thank you so much. Give me a second. Can you see?
Excellent. Okay. Good evening, President Schwartz, board member, Chancellor, community member. So as Mike mentioned, we just brought you our tentative budget for fiscal year 2021 just a couple of weeks ago. And at this point, our district staff is in the process of closing books for fiscal year 1920. And we're making all those necessary adjustments to our adopted budget. So I'm going to take just a few minutes to go over just a few changes that are, that are taking place right now in terms of our adopted budget. And just bear in mind, those projections and all those things are pointing time as things are still moving a bit. And we will lock in our projections for the adopted budget at the end of this month. I'm going to go through my slides really fast and I'm going, I'd like to sort of paint the picture as to the changes to our budget as well as the challenges in the next year, the 21, 22. Given all this uncertainty and so many unknowns that, that, that's ahead of us. So that the decision that we are making this year as well as the next are made in, within the same context and with understanding on the impact on our resources. And then our Chancellor Claire and I can answer any questions. So here's the slide to remind you of what you adopted a couple of weeks ago. It's the revenue for our tentative budget, 207 and a half million dollars in revenue and the corresponding expense budget. So we had a balanced budget for the tentative budget. And of course, we also brought to you a budget for all other funds. And since then, few things changed. We received more precise estimates and we're closing books, which we're doing right now. We had to adjust certain projections. So I put together a chart summarizing some of those changes. And these are changes from tentative budget to adopted budget. And what the impact of those changes are, whether the revenue or expenses are going up or going down, and what the amount roughly estimate, and then if there is any impact on the 50% law. I thought this would be a good, good for us to have that information as well. So here are the adjustments as of July 16, again, pointing time. At tentative budget, we estimated our promised scholars fee waiver at roughly about 1.3 million. There were some late adjustments through the last quarter and we adjusted our projections to 1.5 million. This reduces our revenue by a couple hundred thousand dollars. We also revised our estimates for property taxes revenue. As we are closing our books and we were booking our final revenue, we found out that the county pretty much over estimated the revenue for the 1920 and it's rolling through to 2021 as the base for the next year. And so the increases for the next year are of that smaller base are a little bit lower. So now we are adjusting our revenue down by $500,000. In a tentative budget, we projected our non-resident enrollment to decline by about 35% as compared to prior year. But given all the uncertainties surrounding visas, travel reduction, restrictions, shelter in place, you know, studying online, we now revised these projections down working with, very closely with colleges by additional 11%. And this resulted in adjustment to our revenue by additional $800,000. So these were the reductions to our revenue. We're also projecting some changes to expense budget. As a side note, as you may recall, we estimated a tentative budget that if everything were to be expended as budgeted, if enrollment was as projected, if none other, non-teaching expenses were incurred, and then the projected 50% law compliance would be somewhere around 43%. With the decline in non-resident FTES, this ratio will need to be recalculated. And I don't know at this point, the estimate what this is going to be for adopted. So many things are still moving up and down a little bit. So, but definitely decline in enrollment with the FTES for the non-residents, this will have an impact on the calculation. It just depends on who our students are, what classes they are taking and so on. So this was the reduction in revenue, as I mentioned. And so I signaled during our tentative budget presentation that some of the expenses might be already happening. Expense increases might be happening and some will have here displayed that are based on the new data available. Now, there was a robust conversation about the 50% law compliance during the last two board sessions. And given constraint on our budget due to those revenue reductions, as I already explained, and increases in expenses, one way we believe to address board request is to increase our full-time to part-time faculty ratio, which would require us to move our resources for this cause. And we could do this as proposed here with converting about 10 part-time to full-time faculty. So we will need the board direction as to this. And if this is the board direction, the only way we would actually hire would be the instructional faculty to help us moving the needle towards the compliance with 50% law. So how we would do that, as you can see, a tentative budget, we set aside 1.8 million dollars towards COVID-19 cost mitigation. We know that there's going to be a lot of those costs, given that we're going to be in fall at least online. We could, we proposing the reduction of that budget by $700,000. And as we have learned that we're going to receive some dollars from the state for this purpose. And we're proposing to move these dollars towards converting of 10 part-time faculty into full-time faculty. As I said, we can do that because we're receiving some of the state block grant dollars that will help us offset some COVID-19 cost mitigation. Otherwise, as you can see with revenue reduction and expense increases, our budget is really squeezed out. The good thing is in 2021, certain COVID-19 expenses can be excluded from the 50% law calculation. However, that provision expires at the end of fiscal year. So our district is a member of SELF or the School Access Liability Fund. SELF is a nonprofit joint power authority and it provides liability coverage to its members such as our district beyond the primary coverage that we purchase from commercial carriers. And it's covering claims that exceed 1 million or for us, $5 million claims. Now, excess liability coverage is designed to handle like catastrophic claims or sexual, cases of sexual assault and molestation. And earlier this year, AB 218 was passed and AB 218 extends statute of limitation on claims for childhood sexual assault going from age 26 to age 40. It just extends that statute of limitation. So obviously, SELF could not reasonably anticipated the action of the legislature. And basically, this AB 218 essentially created a new unfunded mandate on schools, on the JPAs and even the insurance companies. So recently, SELF Board approved AB 218 funding plan that is just effective starting this fall. And under this plan, basically, SELF is going to collect the funding amounts needed in, to fund the potential, basically to fund this AB 218 liability in three equal annual payments from current and former members starting this fall. Now, we do have some funds set aside in our insurance. And so we do not need to draw those funds from our general fund, but depending on the increases on our regular insurance next year, we may have to have to absorb some of it from our general fund as this is a three-year assessment. This, as a side, as a side note, we do not have any claims against us and our exposure is low. But again, the assessment from SELF is, you know, since we've been a member since 1986, we're expecting that assessment's going to be roughly about 1.75 million dollars for each of the next three years. As the SELF is kind of building a reserve for any of those potential claims. So we know that we're not going to have any international travel during this time with COVID-19 and shelter in place. It's highly unlikely. So we are shifting these dollars to areas where these dollars are much needed. A portion will be used for faculty professional development and rest will be used to offset increases in other operating expenses that are kind of listed below. As I signaled during the tentative budget presentation, our insurance costs are increasing due to a variety of things, fires, mudslides, hurricanes. And we have adjusted our budget now by about $500,000 now that we have received premium estimates for this year. Although this is a drain on our resources, it's, it's, it's reducing our operating budget in our general fund. We transfer out an account for those costs in the, in another fund, so it does not have an impact on our 50% law calculation. Then our district-wide technology cost projections have been revised down from the tentative budget. It's a good thing. These costs are projected to increase, but not as much as we expected at the tentative budget. So we're revising our estimates by about $300,000. And there are other costs that are increasing and that of them about $600,000 as compared to the tentative budget. And last but not least, we do not know yet what the impact of negotiations might be and the MOUs and things like this. So I could not really quantify those here, but they will definitely will have an impact on the adopted budget. So you, as I mentioned, you will see some additional changes beyond what this is listed. As I mentioned, this is as of July 16. So in summary, revenue is projected to decrease by about $1.5 million. And our net expenses are projected to increase by about half a million dollars. So as a result of this, we're going to see a reduction to our funding as compared to tentative budget by about $2 million. And we are passing these cuts to this site in order to budget our, to balance our budget. Now, because of shelter in place since mid-March, all our sites, including the district office and facilities and all three colleges, have a little bit larger than in prior years, one-time savings because we didn't have conference and travel, graduations expense, procurement for the summer semester and fall with some of those expenses usually starting earlier in the spring. So they will be able to use some of the savings to offset some of those reductions. Again, this is a point in time and we will bring the final budget to the board for adoption on September 9. And again, some changes are still expected. Now, looking ahead to 21, 22, here's what keeps us up at night. There are just many unknowns. And as we are finalizing this year budget, we kind of have to think about planning for the 21, 22 within the context of the next year budget. So we know that the COVID-19 impact was not reflected in the county property tax projections. We don't know if the increases are just going to decline slightly or whether we're going to experience some revenue decline. We don't know what the enrollment is going to be for non-resident population as well as resident. And the total enrollment revenue is roughly about 7% of our total revenue. We also don't know what the insurance premium will be. We usually get those rates sometime by late spring. With shelter in place, we're currently not charging students for parking. However, we're hoping that we'll be back at least to some extent to our physical campus in the spring. If things continue however, to be unresolved with COVID-19, then we'll need to continue to support our parking fund. Now, 21, 22 will be the second year of the self-assessment that I just spoke about. And we may need to use some general fund dollars if, if needed to set aside for this purpose. And of course, the state pretty much exhausted all tricks that would result in mitigating any cuts to community colleges. And if you recall, we have now in place huge deferrals and the economy does not recover fast and state has received increases in revenue, which is highly unlikely. State will have just nowhere to go but to implement cuts. And to that point, we will most likely see the reduction to our categorical funding. If you recall, we were projecting upwards of 11 million at May revise and we may see similar proposal next year. And our utilities budget for this year is scaled down because we're already for adopted and tentative, sorry, for adopted budget where our budget, given that we know that we're going to be sheltered in place through fall, we reduce that utilities budget. But next year, we assume that we'll be back to campus. And with that, we would have to revise the budget sort of back up to a higher amount. And last but not least, we don't know, again, the impact of negotiations, the insurance premiums and all those things that might have impact on the next year budget. So as you can see, lots of factors will be monitoring and we will be updating the board throughout the year on our fiscal position. And of course, there most likely will be August state revise, which we will update you on as well. And now I guess Chancellor Claire and I can answer any questions.
Yeah, actually Bernard, I'd like to just add, it says, yeah, if you could take off the screen share so we can see everybody. And we definitely want to open it to questions, but I think the big takeaway that I want the board to hear, first of all, we do need a policy direction on whether we take ongoing $700,000 a year and convert that to additional full-time faculty positions. That is a, that is a policy decision that we'd like to hear from. You don't have to, you know, you don't have to make that decision tonight. You don't have to be that direction. But that's something that we need to, we need to think about. With the caveat that the only, that that would be new money going to the colleges, it can only be spent on instructional faculty. It cannot be spent on any non-instructional costs because that won't get you closer to the 50% law. Now, the colleges are hiring some full-time faculty that are non-instructional already. So it's not as if we only be hiring instructional. But this is extra funding to the colleges for this. But this is extra funding to the colleges for this explicit purpose of hiring instructional faculty. So that's a policy decision that we eventually need to hear from you on, or even tonight if you're ready. The other is, you're going to see, we're not running, I'm very much opposed to running structural deficits. We all know districts that run structural deficits go bankrupt. So we will not run structural deficits, but we do have reserves. And you can see that we are projecting a deficit for right now that would have to be picked up by the sites. The good news, and I'll continue to work with the presidents, is that a lot of the savings this year can be shifted and to cover the deficit for the next fiscal year. And then the scary thing is, I think we're going to really, not scary, but we're going to have to really be deliberate and use this next fiscal or an academic year to really plan for what we're expecting could be more substantive cuts in the twenty-one, twenty-two year. So that's kind of a high-level summary of, you know, when I wake up at two in the morning, that's what I'm thinking about in terms of the finances. And I just kind of wanted to bring it back up to that level for you because I know we've given you a lot of details as well. So with that, we're open to questions, and it looks like Kathy has something else to add. Sorry, go ahead, Kathy.
Sure, I just wanted to add one more thing. The seven hundred thousand is conversion costs. That means that we would eliminate ten FTE of adjunct faculty to be replaced by ten FTE of full-time faculty. And that delta is about seven hundred thousand.
So we're available for questions or comments?
Okay, trustee Oliver, go ahead.
So, you know, first, thank you very much for a very comprehensive presentation. I just want to clarify my own confusion about the way we looked at the columns, one tentative and one adopted. So we adopted a budget late June. Is that what we're calling the adopted budget?
No, that's a tentative budget. And so, late June, we adopt tentative budget. And now we're making any adjustment to that budget to adopt it in September as adopted budget.
Okay, so this is anticipating what would be brought before us as an adopted budget in September?
That is correct.
Okay, that helps a lot, thank you. So between late June and basically over the past month, these are some significant changes. And I guess things are always changing, so that's the nature of the world. I'm just curious about what, so on the international student front, we're now looking at a forty-six percent or non-resident tuition income. So that's both out of state and out of country. A forty-six percent decrease in our enrollment, that's the number that we're looking at from?
That is correct, that's the numbers we have received from the colleges.
Is that, does that reflect like actual enrollments? Or is it projections of what's going on in the nation or the state with international students?
It's both, it's most, so it's my understanding that we surveyed the students who are here currently, and they are already here and planning on staying and taking classes in fall. And then we have also some students who are transferring from other institutions to study in our, at our colleges. And then there might be some students, which we don't count a lot, but we're still counting on some students that there might be still coming from other countries to study here in US. But that's, therefore, you see that decline in projections between tentative and adopted because there's been so much activities that may have impacted those numbers.
Okay, then I do have a question on the access liability fund. And is that a JPA, who fund, who do we use for that access liability insurance?
So is this school access liability fund? So that's a JPA, and that's what, so we're together in the, with the, as a JPA, with other organization.
Okay, I'm just curious whether, you know, the self-insured or JPAs have pros and cons. And I think among the cons is it's a very limited pool of entities that, you know, are sharing the risk. I just wonder if we could be better off going to, you know, the commercial marketplace for that kind of insurance.
That's something that definitely we can look at. However, this is looking at the risk, covering the risk over the five billion dollars. And it'd be kind of, we can look at this and see from commercial providers. It's, we can see that the commercial providers most likely will have the same increase in rates and assessments because that AB two eighteen is impacting everyone. It's the districts, it's the insurance providers, as well as the JPAs. Everybody is pretty much in the same boat.
I would comment also that SELF is a rather large organization. It's not a small JPA, and includes K through community colleges.
Correct.
So it's pretty statewide.
Now, I would like to add that actually, with us in this particular JPA, we are not assessed the same rate as the K through twelve. We have negotiated a rate that scaled down a little bit because the community colleges are not having the same experience in terms of claims as the K through twelve. Where we're assessed a little bit lower rate, and we're expecting that rate to be lower than other K through twelve schools.
Thank you, other questions from board members? Anything else you have to add, Chancellor?
Well, I'll let trustee Manocur go first.
Slow on the trigger.
Thank you, yeah, it's just, yeah, you got to jump in fast, Mike. Yeah, I was just going to just make a comment. And I know, you know, you asked if we had any thoughts now or wanted to wait until September or whatever to this. But just on the issue of the conversion of the part-time faculty and full-time faculty that's seven hundred thousand dollars, I know it's a big chunk of money, and the budgets are tight. But I just, you know, my sentiment is if we can figure out a way to make that work in the budget, I would like to see us continue to move forward with that because I think it's something that will improve the quality of our educational offerings for our students and will, you know, for a better educational community. So if we can, if we can figure out how to do that and not blow our budget completely all to pieces, I'd like to see us continue to try and make that work.
Thank you, actually trustee Manocur, that was what I was going to ask is, unless I hear otherwise, I think we'll continue to carry that in our budget and we'll continue to assess. And, you know, that's clearly, you know, we heard the concerns of the board, and we want to respond to that. And so we'll continue to carry that as a line item. If things change, we'll certainly let you know. But if that's the will, the direction of the board, we're happy to continue in that direction.
So will we know at the time, like, where the funds are coming from to give that?
Well, I think we're basically, yeah, I think we're basically balanced. Although we're going to have some one-time, you know, that we're going to have to burn through a little bit. But that seven hundred thousand is ongoing. But that's why we have to watch it, but I think we can power through it and be okay.
Justie Haller?
I really appreciate that recommendation and believe it's the right thing to do. And believe it's, you know, a really positive statement from our administration that, so I just want to say, yes, I think that's the right thing to do. I'm just to understand, so seven hundred thousand, is that entirely in effect a wage and benefit cost? Are there other one-time conversion costs? Or is that just the difference in the price of labor between ten full-time versus the equivalent of ten part-timers?
It's an estimated, it's an estimated cost, cost difference between a salary of ten full-time faculty versus ten part-time faculty.
And benefits.
And ten full-time equivalent.
Full-time equivalent, yeah.
You know, I think that's a really interesting number, you know, it's really kind of the first time we've seen that number. So in effect, full-time faculty versus part-time faculty doing the same work, it's a seventy thousand dollar per worker difference, which is very revealing. I'll just leave it at that, thank you.
A good chunk of that is benefits, a very good chunk of that is benefits.
Okay, I think we have the direction we need. We just wanted to give you that update, and unless there's any other comments, we, I think we have what we need to move forward. Yeah, no, I think I agree with the direction as well.
Okay, we will move on the agenda. Everybody's ready to twenty-seven, five C, an update on request for proposal process for operations of the Samantail Athletic Club in partnership with the district. Vice Chancellor Bauer and the interim director.
Excuse me?
What? I can't even read my own notes these days. Twenty-seven four, sorry, apologize about that. Update on the effect of the Title IX rule and the new regulations. The purpose of this report is to provide, am I wrong again? The purpose of this report is to provide important primer information on Title IX changes. There will be a study session on this topic in the early fall, likely in September, where an in-depth presentation and discussion will occur. As of now, we have District Director Policy Training and Compliance Sims will provide this report. Where are you?
I'm here, hello, good evening. Good evening to Board of Trustees, Chancellor Claire, the community members, our students, and my esteemed colleagues, and as well as the presidents. I'm happy to join you this evening to briefly discuss the effect on our title, the final rules and regulations regarding Title IX. So just this past summer, well, actually, early spring, on May sixth, twenty-twenty, the Department of Education finally released the long-awaited regulations. And they'd like for us to get them implemented by August fourteenth, twenty-twenty, which does not give us a lot of time. So I will say that my colleagues across the nation and within California, we are all steadfast, working hard on trying to be compliant by August fourteenth. And there's some significant changes. Now, understand that these are now regulations that are law. And they have not, it was over two thousand pages. I have not memorized all two thousand pages. So again, we'll go more depth with the study session. But they haven't really come out with regulations since nineteen ninety-seven. The last administration under Obama, the two thousand eleven and two thousand fourteen Dear Colley letter, that was just guidance, it was not regulations, this is actual law now. And even with the guidance, when that came out in two thousand eleven, twenty-fifteen Dear Colley letter, over a hundred California schools were under investigation by OCR. And again, that was just guidance. So now we need to get in compliance by August fourteenth with these regulations. And so just a brief definition of just Title IX in general, basically, it's this very simple statute, it says, no person in the US show on the basis of sex be excluded from participating in being denied the benefit of or subjected to discrimination under any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. So as you know, we receive as a community college district federal assistance, and therefore, we have to be in compliance with Title IX. This does include sexual harassment, misconduct, sexual assault, relationship violence, dating, and stalking. And so with that, there are some significant changes under these new regulations that I do want to cover and highlight. And I know, I don't want to get too much into the weeds of these because they will be, you know, we'll be talking about them in a study session. But one of the biggest changes is the fact that the definition of sexual harassment has become very narrow. And so beforehand, it was a little bit more expansive. Now, it's the severe pervasive and objectively offensive. And so that is something that we're going to have to review, especially when it comes to our policies and procedures in terms of interim policies. Another highlight, which is extremely substantial change, is the live hearings. And so K through twelve, they don't have to allow live hearings. But higher education, we are required to have a live hearing now. And we have to provide each party with an advisor for cross-examination. That was not the case before, that's never been the case before. Some of those schools have had live hearings, but not having to appoint an advisor to each party for the purpose of cross-examination. Another major change is the roles of the Title Nineteen. Currently, we have a one investigative model. I'm the investigator for the district, or either a designee, which may be outside council. And then we have Title IX coordinators on each campus. Now, they're moving away from the one investigative model because it'll be a conflict of interest. Now, you have to have the Title IX coordinator identify, you have to have someone do an investigation, then you have the person, the decision-maker, you have to have separate advisors, and then you have to have an appeals officer. None of these roles can be intertwined. So there's a conflict, Title IX coordinator cannot be the decision-maker. The investigator can no longer be the decision-maker. Currently, in my role, I investigate and I make whether or not there's any policy violations. That will no longer be the case. Another significant change is both parties have a right to appeal. Currently, under our policies and procedures, that's not the case. Also balancing within Title V as it relates to Title IX, but now both parties have the right to appeal, and the appeal officer cannot be the decision-maker. When I gave the definition of what title, the Title IX definition, this current administration took that definition, took that definition literally. And so therefore, the jurisdiction has changed that covers Title IX cases. Prior to the regulations being released, our study abroad programs are covered under Title IX. That is not the case. We also, if the conduct occurred off-campus, we had jurisdiction under Title IX. That is no longer the case. So if something occurs in social media, and it does have no way connection to the campus, it falls outside the jurisdiction of Title IX. But what does that mean? That means it doesn't mean that we just turn a blind eye to it because we can't do that. But it would go to maybe potentially student conduct instead, or maybe addressed under our other policies and procedures, just not addressed with Title IX and live hearings. We also have to make sure we train our entire Title IX team. So that includes the coordinators, the Title IX coordinators, investigators, decision-makers, anyone that's going to oversee the informal resolution process, and also the appeals process. There's also been a shift, definition shift, in mandatory reporter versus responsible employee. Under the, before the regulations came out, everyone was a mandatory reporter. Now, it's more so who has constructive knowledge. And we'll get a little bit more detail again under that in the study session. So I do want to talk about what we have been doing so far. Since the regulations came out May sixth, we have, as a Title IX team, which has now included myself, the Title IX coordinators, we've also brought in the student conduct officers at each campus, along with HR director and the vice chancellor, chief of staff, and also Chancellor Claire, we've been discussing this, about what our program will look like as it relates to Title IX. Also getting everyone just at least educated on the regulations. So we did attend a training in early June, just about what the regulations are about, so we could start to understand how we need to go about implementing them. We've also discussed this with some of our Bay Ten area colleagues, some of our colleagues down in Southern California, and just across the nation, seeing what they're doing, how they're implementing their programs, as everyone is at a rush to get this completed by August. and just across the nation, seeing what they're doing, how they're implementing their programs, as everyone is at a rush to get this completed by August fourteen, twenty twenty. Some of the, 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 kind of like the to-do list, the top ten to-do list that we must get done right away is really preparing interim policies and, and regulations. And, and this is especially when we have a study session, this is where we're going to need some guidance. Because you know, as, as the Board of Trustees, you do approve different administrative board procedures and policies. And so we're going to have to potentially prepare some interim policies and see what that looks like. Also, training all of our administrators. Right now, as a Board of Trustees, you all at least are the appellate body for Title Five cases. You may very well become the appellate body for Title IX as well. And so with that understanding, the Board of Trustees would need to be trained as well in this area. Also, eventually, we'll have to train campus-wide on employees on reporting responsibilities. We will have to start revising and posting current Title IX training materials on our website. We are working with outside council right now, so they can come in and train our Title IX coordinators, our advisors. Basically, our entire team on these new roles will take. This is something that we, like I said, we will have to keep current trainings posted and materials on our website. And update, make sure that we update the district website as in compliance with not just Title IX, but also California law. There will, I mean, it's going to be a bit of a cultural shift. I think it is doable and we can do it. But again, it's August fourteenth, so we're a little bit less out than a month. That's really kind of all, just kind of on the update. If there's any questions, maybe I can answer. Like I say, it was over two thousand pages long. So I can get back to you if I can't answer any questions.
Okay, question, you have other questions, some board members? I'm going to find you all. Okay, trustee Mandelker.
Yes, thank you. So I had just one question, which is, I know this, this change in law has come about as a result of the efforts by the current administration to dial back or roll back Title IX. I'm just wondering if there is a change in administration in November, you know, starting in January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, that wanted to undo the rollback of these things. How quickly would that happen and how quickly would we have to then retrain again to go back to sort of the old, the old way that we were doing things under Title IX? I wonder if you can comment on that a little bit or, or anything we would want to do to prepare for that.
So that's actually a great question. That's really been discussed in every training that I've participated since these regulations have come out. And basically saying that we should proceed as if, I mean, the regulations are laws. Even if it's a new change in administration, they're not going to change these laws within the first probably six months or a year. We will still be, have to be in compliance with these laws. And so, and even if they do change some of them, they're not going to change all of them. Because of the, the cultural shift of the last administration and really kind of focusing more on victim-centered. And now they're trying to kind of swing the pendulum so it to be balanced, a little bit more balanced. So I, based off of all the trainings and, and the, the people and expertise in this field, legal counsel, they're not suggesting that we kind of wait and see what happens in November. That we am actually, you know, getting in compliance with the regulations because you're probably going to be here to stay for at least another year or so, because they are law. And it's not as easy to change law as it is guidance, to pull guidance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from board members, comments, trustee, good, good, then I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right. I guess my question is, is about what your opinion is on, you know, your current workload and then the ability of our district to be, you know, to be brought into compliance and, and what that might look like. Do you, do we currently have the bandwidth to do that? And if not, what needs to be done? What changes do you see needing to be done? Is it expanding on a team? I know we talked about the, the coordinators at the different sites, but also going away from the investigative, one investigator, investigative model, adding investigators, decision-makers. What does the expansion of a Title IX response team look like for our district?
So they have discussed this in the trainings and they're like, right now already just one person, that's not enough. Especially someone that reviews students, faculty, and staff, as well as train campus-wide. So I can just say that right there. Going forward, because even if, let's say, it was just me, it would be a conflict of interest. So with a team, they're saying a team for like a community college district, our size will look like having anywhere from ten to fifteen people being on that team. And, and, and other institutions that are larger, some of them have less, up to thirty to forty. But ours is at least ten to fifteen people because we will need advisors. We have to appoint advisors to each party if they don't have an advisor for cross-examination. The decision-maker cannot be the Title IX coordinator or the investigator. And so with that being the case, there, it is no longer can it be one person or two people doing the work like it has been in the past under the old, the old guidance.
Now, I guess that the follow-up to that, it would be either to David or to Chancellor Claire. What though, do you see those roles being absorbed within HR current positions that we have? Or is it expanding and saying, hey, we actually need to do a build-out of a Title IX response team? And then a second part is if we are doing a lot of engagement of, of law firms, does it make sense to create our own in-house unit or something that's more cost-effective to, that, you know, keeps us fiduciarily responsible, fiduciarily responsible, or fiscally responsible, I'm sorry, fiscally responsible moving forward? Because it really seems as though if it is a ten to fifteen-person team and it's expanding it, that costs can definitely balloon within the, in the next year.
David, do you want to give it a shot? I mean, I've got my opinion, but you're a little closer to it than I am.
Sure, sure. And I think that's a, a great question that you're asking, trustee Goodman. And that has been part of the conversation that we've had is to sort of look at, you know, and it's a work in progress. So we understand that, that it's going to, as we work on it, we're going to learn and to see whether, you know, one system we have in mind may work, but then we're going to have to, we may have to sort of change or look somewhere else. I mean, right now, we are looking at outside legal as being a part of that solution. But you bring up a good point of, you know, how, is that sustainable? Is that something we want to do moving forward? Is it, is it, you know, or do we want to go in-house? You know, the current HR team that we have in place would not be able to sort of fulfill the needs that, you know, Monisha Sims is talking about. However, that's why we're also looking sort of district-wide to see, you know, who can, can place or be in those different roles, get trained, and then sort of be in those roles. So, you know, we're, we're still looking at that to see how much will be outside, how much can we have internal? And then at some point, making that decision of, well, you know, we've been doing it this way with a lot of external. Should we now decide to have it really be focused on fully an internal team? And then.
Oh, no, go ahead, trustee Goodman, I'm sorry.
No, I, I just had a follow-up until I wait till you.
Yeah, well, so, and I would add to that, that, you know, we are bringing on the new executive vice chancellor, as well as the chief human resources officer. So I actually think, I think it's really a timely, a good question, a timely question. So I think we're going to have to look at the structure. We're not, you know, we're going to make this massive reorganization. But we're going to have to really assess our human resources department, what our needs are, what our capabilities are. And I think bringing in some folks that are, you know, new to this, are going to be able to look at our, at our structure with some fresh eyes. And I think that your question will, would sort of be baked into that analysis.
Okay. And then the last part of that is around the, the legal cost. Would the cost of bringing in some of those individuals in, could that be taken out of, or is it a separate part of the budget where we get our legal cost from?
And I look Bernard, I'm looking at Bernard, I don't know where that's.
I, I, I mean, I'll just tell you, I, I, my gut feel is that because that we're going to have to expand effort. I, I think we're going to, you know, I, I'm not sure. I think we're going to have increased costs one way or the other. And yeah, we may save some, but I think, I think net, we're probably going to be spending more money.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know. It's not a very precise answer, but that's my, my sense of it. President Schwartz, you're muted, I think.
That's why I should never do that. Are there other questions from board members? Okay. Well, thank you. I think you're coming back in September. Is it September to have more in-depth from your two thousand page read?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate everyone listening. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you know, just kept, in September, when we take this up again, do you think we'll have some more information on the financial impact as well?
And go ahead, Monisha.
No, I'm going to say, I hope so. I mean, it, it's gonna be, I mean, that's, that's why it's a little bit contra, you know, the, the fact that these regulations got released in terms of the timing. I mean, schools are really in terms of, you know, resources, really trying to stretch that. But we, we should have a little bit, maybe a better idea, especially after we go through some more training and kind of build and decide on who we're going to select for our Title Nineteen.
Yeah, and I, and I would agree with, with what Monisha said. And I would say at the study session, we should really have, by then, the, the team that we, you know, the internal team and then whatever sort of outside piece that we would add to it, will at least understand that piece of it, whatever, what that team will look like. And that will give us a much better idea of what the costs are.
Thank you again.
Bye.
You don't have to go, but.
Well, I'm not going to go, but.
Isn't it past midnight, your time right now, Monisha?
Something you can go, go. Okay, thanks. Now, I think we are at twenty-seven five C, correct? An update on the request for proposal process for the operation of the San Mateo Athletic Club in partnership with the district. Vice Chancellor Bauer and interim director of general services. Pia Blue will provide the report. Sorry about that.
Thank you so much, President Schwartz. It's, it's. Meeting and at the end of the meeting. Yeah. Anyway, so yes, thank you. In response to, so the board in, at the study session that I did in March had indicated its desire that we put the services at College of San Mateo for the Athletic Club out to bid through an RFP process. And then immediately went into shelter in place. However, a lot of work was being done through that period. Questions were developed, and I believe at the June twenty-fourth board meeting, the board had directed that it wanted a subcommittee of the board to work with Yanelli, the interim, Yanelli Polito, the interim director of general services, and myself on the scope of work for the RFP. And that we come back and present that scope of work document to the board and so that the public could weigh in on it. And that is what we have before you this evening. So we did put that document together, that board subcommittee consisting of yourself, President Schwartz, and trustee Mandelker. We've met twice, very productive sessions. And I'm going to turn it over to interim director Polito, because again, she is going to actually run the RFP process. And she can walk you through the document that we provided to you all. And then we, we will both, you know, work at answering any questions anybody has about the process or the timeline. So Yanelli, it's all yours.
Yes. Thank you, Vice Chancellor Bauer. So as he mentioned, we have met with the board ad hoc committee a couple of times. And so the report that was presented in today's agenda is a very high-level summary of the outcome of the scoping session to provide the, the other members of the board, as well as the public, to review the opportunity statement, the goals and objectives we've developed, along with our proposed evaluation criteria, the contract term, and planned outreach efforts for this procurement. So with that also, we had to update the RFP schedule to allow sufficient time for these additional steps in, in the RFP process. And so after we hear from the board, as well as the community, Tom and I will continue to work to finalize all the RFP documents during the next few weeks. And our goal is to release and legally advertise the RFP on August seventeenth. And we anticipate to bring contract award recommendation to the October twenty eighth regular board meeting. And so I'm just keeping it, you know, short and sweet. The board report outlines, again, the opportunity statement, goals and objectives. And now Vice Chancellor Bauer and I can address any questions.
Thank you, Yanelli. I guess since we've invited the public, we should ask the public if they have any questions, which I don't see any at the moment. So how about board questions? This is so clear. You didn't have any questions, right? Oh, I'm sorry.
We, we did our job well.
I compliment you. I, trustee Oliver, I think you have questions.
So I guess this would be a question really for our chancellor. Because we have two things that have been launched, I think, pretty much on the same timeline. When we discussed this, I don't remember if it was our first meeting in June or whatever. But the other item that we discussed was a more comprehensive review of the operation, including reviewing options to bring these services in-house. So I understand we don't have time to waste on this. I, I, I guess from my point of view, we don't have time to waste on either of those two directions. So they're sort of running together on parallel tracks. I just don't want to lose sight of that. So my question is, where are we with the bigger picture question of, you know, is this really an RFP to bring some outside vendor in versus taking a more comprehensive look at what's the best way for us to operate?
So, sorry. Can you hear me okay, trustee Oliver? Everybody hear me? Yeah, okay. Switching back and forth. Yeah, no, great question. And absolutely. I, I had, I had hoped to hire actually a recently, fairly recently retired administrator to kind of run this for us. So, and, and not necessarily do the work, but to, to find a firm that can do the work for us. And unfortunately, the person's not available. So I decided, just, just looking at our staff and we're stretched thin, I'm just going to do that part of it. And I have reached out to a, a couple of firms, still working with them. I, I don't think, honestly, looking at it, it's, it's not a, it's not rocket science to do this project, I don't think. And, and what I want to do though is I want to avoid firms that are actually in this business. Because I think, I just think we need a completely separate, independent look, just from a pure personnel standpoint. So I have reached out to one firm that a trustee suggested to me that I think is a really good firm. And so I'm, I'm trying to get in touch with them and, you know, they understand what the timeline is. I've also reached out to somebody that is in, a long-time HR executive in, in the public sector. And while she's not available to do it, she's working with me to find some others where, that, of folks that she's used to do similar. So I know what the, I know what the deadline is. I know we got to get this moving. And at the same time, I'm, just looking at the scope of the project, I, I don't, I don't think it's a massive undertaking to do this work. It's just, as you said, to have somebody that's kind of at arm's length from the whole process to get it done. So I'm, I'm confident we'll have it done by, and moving in parallel with, with the other RFP. And I think the RFP actually, I'm sorry, I think the RFP actually includes options actually for exploring some sort of hybrid type model as well.
Thank you, and I appreciate your, your thoughts and your plans. I, I want to make sure we don't run into another situation. I I want to make sure we don't run into another situation where we're running out the clock.
Right, right.
And then we really have no choice but to go down one path versus another. So I do believe it really is of the essence.
Yeah, thank you. No, and I appreciate you putting that front and center on the radar. Couldn't agree more.
Okay. I thought there was a hand raised, and then I looked again, and it was gone, so.
There are two questions.
Oh, there you go. John, John Pipatell, I saw it, right?
Yeah, well, we have two questions also. I'll read those. What is the process to make sure the classified staff bargaining units are being looked at to fulfill some of the positions in SMAC? The second one, also, at the study session held at this, in the CSM Coral Room, I asked for the positions that are being contracted out, the job descriptions and salary ranges of all positions in SMAC. So can we get a response, I guess?
John, did you hear those questions? Did you see them?
Yeah, there's a question in the RFP about, again, about hybrid operations, so that's already in there. So we'll find out. And as far as I'm reading, I asked for the precision contract of the job descriptions. So I remember questions being asked. I don't remember a specific request that I supply job descriptions and salary ranges for all the positions, but again, we have them. So who who does that go to? CSEA or does that go to the board? I mean, I don't know who I, I don't know who I send those to.
Yeah, I'm throwing.
Looks like the request is coming from CSEA.
So I mean, if that's a formal request, then then I can actually send what I have to them. And I'm assuming that would go to Juanita.
Well, and I think the board should at least be included.
Yes. I I just just give me direction.
Yeah, send it to the board and 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 the CSEA since they asked for it. We would like to see it ourselves, right? Trustee Goodman, did you, I don't know why I'm having trouble. John Pipatell, his his hand keeps coming and going with mine, so. Are you out there, John? Go ahead and ask your question.
Yeah, no problem. I I don't mean to belabor the point. I've made it a couple of times. I just wanted to make sure that the the RFP can accommodate an academic function in job training opportunities, career training opportunities for students who can learn how to run an athletic facility and turn that into a career opportunity. And I think that's mentioned in section two. I just wanted to emphasize that I think that's a very useful function for the facility in addition to the service provided to community access and staff and student access to the facility. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for being patient with me.
And that's a great point. I just want to say workforce development is a huge part of what it is we do for students and many of them who now work with XO and other companies. That's absolutely a part of the RFP.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Woo-hoo. Have we hit them all, Trustee Goodman? I think so. So how about board members? Any other questions on the status of this RFP? Hearing none, I guess it will come back with a. I'm sorry, Yanelli, you gave a timeline. What was that again? Would you mind repeating it?
Yes, so we'll be back, hopefully, October 28 with a contract award recommendation.
Okay, sounds good.
So just just to be clear, then there's the, it looks like with this general information that the RFP is on track and and that we can go ahead and proceed. I just want to be real clear about that. Yes, okay.
As far as the board's concerned, it is.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thanks.
Public is weighed in, and the CSEA will get the what the information that we get also. Okay, sounds good. Twenty, okay, am I moving now to twenty dash seven seven C, a discussion of concept of new board policy regarding solicitation of of and direct contributions from contractors and vendors for trustee elections. This was brought up by Trustee Oliver at the end of our last meeting. I would ask you to maybe elaborate on your, I should have asked you at the time to give me more, give us more information of what you're looking for so that we can open up for discussion, and I'll have you start it, please.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for placing this on the agenda for discussion. You know, there are times when I think windows for change open and times when they close. And I think we are in a period where, as a board, as a group of elected officials, that we can learn lessons, reflect on things that perhaps have gone astray, and and make some changes in our direction. And for me, a lot of this is creating rules, creating guidelines, creating policies that are in place that do not really rely on the individuals who happen to be in positions of of power. And I think this is an opportunity for us to to do something that I think is good public policy. So without overly focusing on the past, I believe that we should make it clear through board policy that our staff, high-level staff, folks who have the capacity to direct contracts, award contracts to vendors and so forth, really need to completely absent themselves from board elections. That has not always been the case, and I'm not here to dwell on that. You could look at campaign finance reports from 2018 and and see that experience that I went through. That it's really, in my opinion, improper for individuals who can influence or direct the awarding of contracts, awarding of vendor licenses and so forth, to have any role whatsoever in the campaigns that we all run for board. And where it matters most is in the solicitation of of donations from folks who will think hard and long about, do they not want to do what they're being asked to do for a favored candidate if it could have a direct impact on their future prosperity as a vendor or contractor of our district? That's why I think it would be a positive thing to adopt a policy saying this is not permitted. It's not a question of whether it's permitted during work hours. That's currently against the law. I'm talking about using those relationships to solicit donations for candidates for this board.
Okay, so that's that's your, that's your interest. I would bring up a discussion of. I look at my own previous select campaigns, plus I, we should look at yours too. I mean, where do you draw the line? I think it's very clear that that member employees of the district cannot participate in a in a campaign of a for a candidate on this on on working time, but what they can do on their own time is an entirely different situation. I'm listening to what you said about contractors, of the connection of introducing somebody, and then maybe the contractor and the candidate would have their own relationship or conversation. I I I'm not really clear what you mean. I'm also looking at, I know that the three unions in our district support candidates, and they give contributions, because I've received them. And so now you're talking about something within our own district. I don't know where we, how far you want to go with, how far anybody wants to go with tying hands, and what difference does it make exactly with politics? So I'm just throwing that out, is trying to talk through what you just said. I don't know if any of the board members have any other comments right now. Trustee Goodman, you went unmuted yourself, so I'm hoping you do.
Yeah, I do. I was gonna give Trustee Oliver an opportunity to respond, but I I believe it's a matter of reforms that could could benefit our can, future candidates that are running for office. I I think it goes hand in hand with us going to district elections, serving the same goal of removing barriers for individuals that have not been represented on not just our board, but in in positions of power throughout our county. And so I, that's what I get from from this, and I also see it as us attempting to, I think, do the right thing and clean up some ambiguity or some of that that gray area that we have within our district and and try to be on a on a higher ground of expectations from our relationships with outside vendors and doing things for the right reasons. And, you know, I I again, I was gonna allow Trustee Oliver to to respond to you, but I I wanted, that's my, that's how I received it as a positive and with the intent to do the right thing for the future of our, you know, our elected offices as we are seeing some turnover. I think this is a tremendous time to be able to evaluate what we're doing and kind of lead the way, of course. You know, you can say, you know, what to what end? And yes, a an appropriate question, but I also think we have to also make sure we see ourselves as leaders. You know, just because we we can doesn't mean we should. So I'll leave it at that, and and hopefully, Trustee Oliver can elaborate more on your intentions.
Okay. Trustee Oliver, you want to respond to myself, Mr. Goodman?
Well, sure. I I I think there's a difference between a candidate, an incumbent, or or, you know, someone running who's not an incumbent, getting on the phone on their own and calling around, and, you know, politicians do this. I worked for United States Senator many years ago, and he spent most of his day dialing for dollars. He hated it, but he did it. It was just what he had to do. It's one thing for us to do it. You know, maybe we have relationships with people that can write checks. Maybe we don't. It's different, I think, for administrators to to do it for any candidate, any incumbent, any challenger, and even to be kind of like paving the way. Because I think it's, I guess for me, there's certain things, there's certain lines that maybe we've never discussed. Maybe maybe it's not a comfortable thing to discuss, but administrators, executives do best if they stay out of the politics. I'm talking about really the internal politics of board elections. So having rules that make it easy for them to stay out of those internal politics, to me, is good government. It makes the rules clear. It's the right thing to do.
Okay, we do have a hand raised in the audience. Tigerson? So we unmute that person?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, it's Terry Tigerson. I'm sorry my full name isn't there on the card for you. I was interested in this conversation because I'm, you know, I'm I'm in full agreement that, you know, anything other than individual contributions from individuals can become problematic. And, you know, personally, you know, I've, and I've, you know, run for office before, and I've never taken contributions from anything but individuals in my past. And so I would certainly be supportive of anything that can get that out of of politics. I I don't know what is legal to do here. I'm I mean, I would certainly assume that it would be legal to instruct district personnel that they are not to get involved with directing contributions from anyone who who's in a business relationship with the with the district. But I I take your point, Trustee Schwartz, about, you know, what actually becomes legal in people's relationships and so on and so forth. So I don't really know how you can what actually is is legal for you to do. But I just want to let you know that I, as an individual, would fully support that. I, as an individual, certainly don't intend to take contributions in from anyone other than individual contributors. And and so I just wanted to put that out there. Thanks.
Well, thank you for your input. Appreciate it. Any other board members? Trustee Mandelkern?
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in with a couple of comments. I think there's sort of two different thoughts going on here that I think is important to keep separate because they affect different categories of people. I believe we already have an existing policy, and this is not just about board elections, but it's about any campaigning campaigning or electioneering, which is that district employees cannot use district resources, which means time on the job, their email accounts, the copy machine down the hall, or whatever, that that they cannot use any district facilities for campaign purposes for any election, whether it's board members or the President of the United States or whatever. That's just not in keeping with our our policies and and good government and good use of taxpayer funds. So that's a separate issue, and I believe we have a policy already in place addressing that. Maybe maybe I'm wrong about that, or it needs to be updated, but we can take a look at that. But I think certainly, doing a refresher memo, probably as we head into this, well, will no doubt be a very heated election cycle from top to bottom of the ballot. It's probably not a bad idea to remind employees about the policy on that, so be more clear on what the lines are, and they and they don't cross the lines, they don't go. I remember one of the issues we had several years ago was, you know, shoving flyers in support of a candidate or-ish ballot measure or whatever into mailboxes on the campus, you know, people's individual mailboxes in their departments or whatever. That's not considered supporting, I guess, and and violation of our policy. Anyway, that's one issue. The other issue is the one of contributions from vendors or unions or whatever. And so it's one thing for the candidate to solicit money, because we file campaign finance reports. So it's a matter of public record, and if voters are concerned about who's financing our campaigns, they can see that, and they can make their decisions accordingly. What's not a matter of public record is if administrators, you know, are soliciting funds from vendors. And I think if we look at the same rules that we have Form 700s for, which is to make sure that, you know, gifts are reported and and, you know, sort of favors and benefits, that there's any connection there, that that is reported publicly, that would seem to be the same category of people that we would be concerned about, potentially reaching out to vendors or donors, you know, whether it's on business hours, or whether it's, you know, off hours on the golf course or whatever, that that should probably not be permitted because that's, I think, is where where you have the kind of quid pro quo abuse that that can easily take place that is not visible to the public and is not reported to the public. And that's the, and that's the type of thing that we should be watching for and and preventing with our policies. So I I think that's the area that we should probably be thinking about in terms of the, you know, vendor and other organization contributions.
Trustee Goodman?
Yeah, let's see. Okay, yeah, okay. I think also, you know, probably that that may be a good start. You know, with pledges, you know, individuals that are running for office within our district, we can ask that they, you know, agree and and make and take a pledge not to do certain things. But something that's also of concern, it would be, I guess, trustees of, you know, making sure that we're not directing staff on those, within those hours to violate that policy that you spoke of, Trustee Mandelkern, because that would be equally wrong. And and so you know, I think we have to make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable to those same policies and ensuring that we're not using our position of influence and power to direct staff to do things that are questionable and possibly against board policy. and possibly against board policy.
Okay. Trustee Neris?
Yeah, I think I agree with the concepts that we're talking about here because obviously the appearance of fairness and dealing with the administration and its vendors is very important. And in this day and age, it doesn't take very much for these type of relationships, which do not really inure to the benefit of anyone and hurt the credibility of everyone within the district. It's just not worth... It's just not worth the price that you would be paying because there has to be a certain amount of trust. And the public needs to have this trust, and everyone has to have this trust. And I can't see that that would be something that we would want to have compromised. So I don't have a problem with this idea and this concept as well. I, you know, I mean, we're talking about donations. What if people come and they provide like-kind services or something outside of a direct donation? How do we control this? I guess that's the thing. I mean, we can discern that we want to have a policy, but how will it be least? How will we basically oversee it? And what will be the downside to it to anyone that decides they're going to go against the policy? I mean, we need to think about those concepts, too.
It seems to me it would be a very good time to bring our policy forward as a refresher course for everybody to make sure that we know... Everybody knows, but just to make sure, you know, and kind of bring it up in the future. I'm just thinking of my own case. My husband was a contractor. We were in that world. And I probably had contributions from contractors. And I wouldn't want to have to go explaining, yeah, this is a friend of mine that I already knew, because you're assuming that somebody's connected me. Maybe it was a contractor that did a job for this district at one time. So it just seems like we're just stretching out the things that I think are unnecessary. But that's just my own opinion. I just think people know what they can and cannot do. And I'll leave it at that. But, Trustee Oliver?
So a couple of comments first. It is a very clear, settled matter of state law that employees at all levels cannot engage in electioneering during work time or using work resources, even including, you know, an email that's a smccd.edu email. That's very clear. It's clear that employees and executives of the district cannot solicit other employees for contributions, except there's a narrow exception. If someone were to mail, you know, 10,000-piece mailing and three or four or five happened to go to district employees, but that was not kind of the reason and the goal of the mailing, that's a very narrow exception. So that part, I think, is state law. And, you know, certainly our district conforms with that law. And, yeah, the question of policing it, we're not really addressing that question. But I think what we are trying to address, if others agree, would be for our executives to understand that these are rules, for them to share those rules with others who are, you know, in the hierarchy, who have relationships with contractors. Let's start with that so that it's very clear, like, these are our rules. You know, violations of those rules are dealt with, you know, through whatever our disciplinary practices are, without... Maybe there's at some point a question of what do you do when it happens? I'm just focusing on, let's make sure those rules are really clear-cut and then disseminated within all the ranks of the administrators that it affects.
I don't know. I'm just sitting here thinking a lot of unnecessary, but that's my own opinion. I don't know. Chancellor, do you have any... Do you review with your employees about what they're supposed to do when it comes to an election?
Well, no. I mean, I agree. I mean, it's good practice. You know, we need to stay out of it. And so I understand the intent in the conversation. What we could do is certainly we could work to draft a policy. I think we would really need to run it by legal just to make sure that we're not running afoul of, you know, First Amendment rights or whatever to have you. But I understand the intent in the conversation. And, you know, we certainly could craft something based upon this conversation that, you know, you could at least take a look at, see if the majority of you feel that it's, you know, in line with what your direction is.
So I'm looking at, is this a separate policy you're looking for or one that would be enhanced what we already have?
You know, it looks like Maurice wants to get in there. Sorry. Trustee Goodman?
No, no. If you'd like to answer that question first, and then I'll...
Yeah.
I guess we would have to figure it out, but, you know, I kind of like the idea of it being a comprehensive policy. You know, let's just deal with everything related to campaigning in one place and make it clear. And I actually think it should apply to all employees.
Yes, I was actually directing that question to Trustee Oliver. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, okay. I don't have an answer because I don't really know what our current policy is. And the question of placement, I don't know the answer. If it's a current policy that can be augmented, that would be perfectly fine.
Trustee Goodman?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, Trustee Oliver, this is obviously a very timely conversation. And I think more than anything, it's given us an opportunity to look at the culture and tone that we're trying to set as we began to onboard new trustees. You know, whether, no matter who's here, next fall, we will guaranteed have two new trustees. And I think setting that tone from the top bottom to top-down, we're addressing our ethics. And I think that goes a long way and having this conversation, not just for the employees, but for how we behave as elected officials and moving forward. And I think that's important for us to talk about. And so I appreciate you starting the conversation. As you said, that this is a start, that we can start on this issue. But I do think we need to continue having this conversation as it relates to the ethics, the holding of each other, holding up each other accountable. You know, if someone wants to run afoul of this, it can be done. But I think ultimately, it's about how we govern ourselves. And having this conversation, I think, sets the tone to us that this is what we're saying is acceptable. We're sending this out to those that are considering running for these open seats that we have. And I think that's what this conversation is about here, regardless of where we go next. But I appreciate you bringing this forward because it's very timely and appropriate.
Okay, so I think we will bring the current policy forward, and we can have a discussion about whether we want to enhance that one, tighten it, you know, and...
I'm sorry, President Schwartz. I'm going to volunteer Mitch. I don't see him on my screen, but I think we could probably have something I would thank Mitch as soon as the next meeting for consideration. I don't think it would be a real complex process to put something together that you could look at and react to.
Yeah, we could have a draft for the board review for your August meeting.
Okay, that's good. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving down, we're down to communications. I don't have anything to read. Does anybody have any communications that we want to add to the meetings minutes? A statement from board members. I'm going to start with Jade because I tend to leave her to last. And I don't even know where she is these days, what time of day it is. How you doing, Jade?
I'm okay. How is everyone else doing?
Who knows? But I think we're fine.
I don't have anything to report. Just I came back to the Bahamas a few days ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very late for you there, but we appreciate you being here with us and participating. We appreciate it. Okay, let's start with board members. Trustee Oliver, I always end with you, so I'm going to start with you this time.
No comment. Thank you.
Okay, Trustee Goodman?
No comment. Thanks.
Trustee Neris?
Nothing to share tonight, thank you.
Okay, Trustee Mandelker, it's all yours.
Thank you. Just one comment, because I noticed someone who was diligently hanging on during this whole meeting. I wanted to welcome Dr. Melissa Moreno, our new president of Skyline College. And welcome to your first board meeting, I believe, officially here. And glad to have you with us. And I hope you found this entertaining and stimulating and look forward to many more board meetings to come with you.
Thank you very much.
I should tell you, Dr. Moreno, it's kind of going to end early compared to what we've had lately.
And I should interject that Dr. Moreno is here of her own accord and goodwill. She doesn't get on our payroll till August 1st. So thank you, Melissa, for actually all your work this month in terms of preparing for the transition.
My pleasure.
Very good. Okay, I think that's it for any comments from the board. I will just say I have nothing to report myself. But, Dr. Jackson, we're going to miss you. But, Dr. Moreno, we look forward to getting to know you better. There's things happening in this district all the time. So people come, people go.
Thank you, Trustee Schwartz. I appreciate that.
And keep in touch. We'll miss you. So the next meeting of this board will be a study session by Zoom on August 19th. The board is going to reconvene to closed session. Are we going back to our original sign-in?
Yes, yes, that should work. About five minutes or so? Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much. Be safe, be healthy. Thank you for everything that was said tonight, and good night.
Good night, everyone. Go Army.